Come to order.
Okay.
Um, this is, uh, good evening, folks. Um. I don't see a heck of a lot of people on. I Barbara noise pulling is on and Marcia Chapi is on here and that's it. Um, we will start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America in two republics which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, department heads for coming. Um. First of all, we'll take care of the usual and customary. Do any board members have any announcements if they would like to make?
Other than everybody wants to be home by six thirty.
Yeah, I guess that'll be up to all of us.
Yeah, fair talk best.
Anyone else? Uh, I have two pieces of correspondence that I would like to read for the record. This one is from the Rutland Regional Medical Center. Dear friends, thank you for your very generous contribution and support of the Foley Cancer Center at Rutland Regional Medical Center. Philanthropic and community support continue to play a vital role in Rutland Regional. Helping our physicians, nurses, and staff provide patients with compassionate and high-quality programs and services. As a not-for-profit community hospital, it is our mission to provide every person who walks through our doors with exceptional care. Your generosity will impact the many patients who rely on the Foley Cancer Center for cancer care and treatment each and every day. Thank you again for your support. Sincerely, Tracy M. Moore, Senior Director, Development and Community Relations, and a personal note at the bottom. Thanks again for your very generous support of the Foley Cancer Center. We're grateful for your help. Happy holidays. And.
Just a reminder, we donated to thank Foley's Happy Cow Ice Cream, um, which he donated at our townwide celebration.
And this came to note. Town hall employees, thank you all for sending the lovely floral arrangements. Every time I look at it, I smile. Thank you again for the thoughtful gift. It has made my recovery much more pleasant. And Lervy Schultz. Thank you very much. And. Uh, with that, we will start the budget discussions and, um. I have thought that it would be courteous of us as a board to take the department heads who are here uh, in, in some order and then dismiss them so they don't have to stay for the, for the entire meeting. So it was, with without objection from the board, we'll do that. And I'd like to start with Mike Rowe. Uh, because I, you know, I like to have a little bit of compassion for disabled people and and Mike, uh, even though you're on a really, really good recovery.
Thank you. I'm parked in the handicap. I don't have a sticker, so I get a ticket.
So if you would, and I don't believe, I don't believe this will take long because Mike's done a fantastic job already anyway. Uh, you could go to the recreation budget, which is off towards the end of your pile. And. Uh.
Do we move to approve these and go through?
And I'll just turn the meeting over to Mike and Sharon Garofano Russell, who is the committee chairman for recreation and go to it. You guys can.
Okay, so not, I just moved some stuff around. If you didn't see as of January first, uh, Vermont's minimum wage is now up to thirteen dollars and thirty cents or something like that. So our move to go up to the fourteen was a good move. That's probably going to go again. Um, so if you look at lifeguards, I took money out of that. Um, I feel I can comfortably get away with that uh, for at least this year. So I tried to level fund it as best as possible, even though I say I have a one percent, which I thought I was level funded, but I guess mine popped in there. So there. Um. Some of the stuff went up just because of fees and stuff. So maintenance went up a little bit. Uh, umpires and referees, once again, we're paying them more and that's very hard to find people, just so you know. Um, so at least we can offer to pay them a little bit more. And then everything else is kind of relatively the same. It's only, it's not, the only other real big change, obviously I went up with gas and oil. Um, is on the second page, social activities went up. Um, because I'm doing more with the seniors and I told the seniors that I would put a little in there so that, um, I could cover some of their stuff too. I know that they get some money, but I also feel that it's important that my department pay for things too. And so that's why that's in there under, um, uh, social activities, because that probably use some of the stuff for our, um, like this year I didn't have to because they're eating at school. And I don't know how they're paying for that, but I will, I traditionally have paid for, I shouldn't say I. The rec department is traditionally paid for a couple of meals a year, one of them being the holiday meal. But they decided to go to school, so I'm not sure. I have to talk with Randy to see if they're charging them. I don't know what they're doing, because now they're at school this year, which is next.
Tomorrow?
No, it's twenty. It's actually, yeah. It's the twentieth. It's at school. I think it's eleven or something and they'll have the music playing there. Um, so for you seniors, which is me too, um, you can go and have your meal at school and mingle with the, the children there if you'd like and have the music played. So feel free to do that. That's before our next meeting. So if you want to do that, great. Other than that, uh, if you see any or have any questions online, I pretty much kept it the same or moved some money around to, uh, compensate for something that I might not have spent on or, um, or what have you. So that's kind of where mine is at. I don't know if you have any questions on that. I know it's one percentage.
Not bad.
I think it would be, but.
That's not bad.
Income projected?
Income projected is kind of iffy. Um, my income projected is around twenty-one or twenty-two thousand.
Do we just do the same as what you did last year?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say that. I'm still, the COVID thing is still, you know, with the pool and with other things. Yes, I would say that.
So normally with the budgets, when there's income projected or it's, then that's deducted from the budget and the amount to be raised by taxes is different.
And it should say that. Doesn't it say that on the second page? Usually it does.
It does not. Your budget's at one sixty-eight zero zero eight, and then normally there would be a deduction because I looked at highways and highways isn't, isn't accurate either. So.
So if you would take twenty grand off that.
So it's basically the amount to be raised by taxes would be one forty-eight.
Which you have twenty, twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three.
So I would say that it would be twenty thousand. That was this year.
Okay.
So I would, I would, I am projecting the same just to be the safe side.
So we should correct that to one forty-eight?
Well, I'm just, is that how it's done? I don't know.
That's usually, that, that's, that's the way I believe it's been done. If you look at the other budgets, um, just go back to twenty-one, twenty-two, and it said one forty-three, zero, zero, three, and then I believe we deducted twenty thousand.
And it's one twenty-two.
So you end up with one twenty-two and that's the amount to be, so.
That makes me feel a whole lot better.
You're next.
Yeah. Okay, that wasn't put in there.
Right.
Negative, negative, which is fine.
You know, if you remembered last Tuesday, I brought that up about highway last year. We inadvertently didn't deduct the state aid.
That's right. Yep.
And, and so we're going to be much more careful of that.
Okay.
The, so those are just little things that I think that we do. So your budget would actually show that if you say, you assume about twenty thousand from ticket sales and I think it's concessions and.
Concessions and all the sports that they play that they sign up for.
So that'll get you down to about one forty-eight, zero, zero.
Okay.
To be raised by taxes.
And that makes perfect sense.
So I'd make a motion, we, um, accept the rec budget as presented.
With the note that it's.
Corrected. Or as corrected as, no, actually it's corrected and presented.
Why don't we do so one forty-eight would be the
Amount.
The amount to be raised by taxes.
Right.
Yep.
And, and the ballot items should reflect that, I think. It, it, when your ballot item will say recreation budget's one forty-eight, you know, shall the voters approve this amount to be raised by taxes?
One forty-seven, two fifty-five.
What do you deduct in more than twenty?
Twenty, I'm doing the same amount he did last year.
Well, okay, that, that was.
Which was twenty-one or twenty-seven hundred.
Seven fifty-three.
Yeah, that may be actual.
Yeah.
That was from, that was what you actually took into that.
Say twenty, just to be, just say.
If you do twenty, it's an even number.
That exactly.
Mike is being conservative. He said, say twenty, so we're going to say twenty.
That's what I would go with. So I go with the one forty-eight. So that's what we got.
And we do the calculation. What have we got?
Because if.
Well, somebody else can do that one. It's not worth it.
No, we won't worry about that. And we would approve that amount of one forty-eight. You've heard the motion, uh, you know. There are second to that. I didn't hear.
I did second.
Did you second it? Motion's made in second. Any discussion on a motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. We do have, oh, I neglected to mention, we do have a full board sitting in our office here at the town hall. So, uh, that was a unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Mike.
All right, thank you.
And have a nice evening.
Yes, please don't forget to go to the senior luncheon on the twentieth.
There you go. Thanks for coming over.
No problem. Thank you for letting me go first.
Appreciate that. We didn't have a choice. We just took over that spot. You realize.
Well, I did, I did ask ahead of time, so.
Really?
I did come sick because, yeah, I did ask.
He walked in with a purpose. Notice how I'm keeping warm in my chair with this beautiful vest?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to come to the hot seat?
Oh, they all will eventually.
So.
I think Chris is going to try to get on here.
Uh, the next, uh, one here will go by a little bit of seniority. I guess that puts Dell right in the hot seat.
And not no hot seat.
No. Well, you're part of the general budget, but you know, you're.
I am. I'm part of it.
Pretty much.
I'm part of the fire too.
Pretty much done.
So, uh, again.
So just, uh, point to the numbers so that we can.
Point to some numbers. Uh, I did some cutting, but, uh, waste removal went up. That's, uh, thirty-six, five.
Wait, wait, wait.
Starts at, uh, thirty-five, one ninety. Right, right, Larry.
You want me to start right at the top?
Well, no, but so everybody can find.
We've done this already.
Huh? You guys have done it three or four times, but that'll give you a, thirty-five, one ninety is where transfer station is in this five-page document.
What are we doing?
Transfer station.
Transfer station?
Okay.
Thirty-five, one ninety, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Are you all set, Sharon?
No. I'm looking for the.
On the second, AJ.
Second page of the.
It'll be thirty-five, one ninety.
Second page of the general.
Oh, okay, okay. That's highway.
Yeah, we don't, you're at a highway.
You say that now.
Here's the general right here.
Here's general right here.
About the second page in the general.
I need another page here, dear. Okay.
You guys shortchanging and get the pages?
Okay, here we go right here. We're going to start.
I try to keep them together.
Yeah.
Remember, I think I've got like four copies.
Need the next page.
And that's why I'm.
I, I, I left six or, I left three or four home. The one you and I did the other day, I think. And that's well, that's.
That's fire.
Because Billy keeps deducting that grant.
General.
Then we'll be short.
Okay. We're going to start right here.
Do you have any idea what you spent for paving?
Then we got a couple on the next page.
That, okay. Well, that, I had a question for Carrie. We had our police meeting. I went in, got a time sheet and went home.
Gotcha. Okay.
That was the question.
Transfer station.
Okay.
All right.
Starting at, uh, ninety here, transfer station utilities, twenty-four hundred dollars. I dropped it, six hundred bucks. Uh, engineering, I kept that eight thousand dollars, even though we're going, we're probably only going to have one study. They're going to start testing for PFOs and that's an expensive test. Uh, miscellaneous costs, I kept that right at a thousand dollars. That's my tickets and stuff that I buy uh, at the printers and uh, hazardous waste. I dropped that from nine thousand down to six thousand. And the reason I did that, the last couple of years, I've only had forty-one and forty-three residents use that. So my the cost has dropped on me.
Okay.
Uh, food scraps. Twenty-five hundred. It was three thousand. Uh, people aren't using the food scraps the way they're supposed to?
Or they're recycling them at home?
Yeah, I compost at home. So a lot of people do, I think.
Let's assume they're composting at home.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, they're not, they're, they're starving to death. Okay, waste removal, that went up a little bit. Thirty-six, five. The reason that went up, uh, the price of fuel, I went from one-ten a pull to one-fifty a pull. So.
Wow.
Yeah.
Where it works.
Maintenance, I, I was six thousand. I dropped it down to four thousand. I got most of the stuff done up there at the transfer station. Uh, all that's left to do really, a little more painting and, uh, they're going to install lights in the office for me. And that should drop the electricity bill too a little bit. And if anything should happen, that it's there. Okay, next page, uh, transfer station manager. That's a new line. Uh, that is seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars. And the way I did that, I was told what numbers to use and stuff. That's a six percent in there. So. And I left my numbers at home. So it's the number of hours that I worked up there. A salary, uh, a base pay of twenty-five dollars plus six percent, which brought it to twenty-six fifty.
Okay.
Okay. And on the end of that, those hours, it's, it's an extra forty hours there. That's for, uh, cleaning our totes and stuff like that. Uh, that's, Bill and I share that. We work that together, that other forty hours and so it ends up with twenty hours apiece for the year.
Yep.
And budgets and stuff like that.
Where is that you're talking about? I don't, I don't get the forty-hour thing. Well. I mean, that's calculated.
Seventeen thousand.
Oh, okay. It's in, it's in there.
It's built in there, yes. I'm not trying to hide nothing.
No, but we wouldn't see it because it's not down here.
Yeah. So if you didn't tell us, Larry, we wouldn't know and we probably wouldn't.
I want you to know where.
That's how we arrived at the number you came here.
Okay, transfer station attendee, twelve thousand, five dollars. I took his hours and with his six percent, it brought him up to twenty-five oh one. And that's how I came up with that number there.
Okay.
Recycling?
Now, these, Dell, just, just so people know, if you have previous budget, if you've had previous budgets, that for some reason, and we, we haven't figured out why, but it doesn't really matter. Those two numbers for manager and assistant, the totals were ah significantly based on some, somebody calculated it wrong. I don't know who, but in any case, Larry found it. And so this, both of those numbers, seventeen, five oh six and twelve, oh, oh, five dropped significantly. And change.
You're not shortchanging you or Bill?
No.
No, 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 not at all. I don't know where those numbers came from, but they did.
Yep.
It didn't work.
Well, thankfully, uh, as a department head, he went over the numbers and, and found that significant error and obviously it changes the, it changes the total quite a bit, actually. Okay, sorry to interrupt you there. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, one ninety-nine recycling. I went up on that because again, the cost of the fuel and stuff, and in the last couple of weeks, the recycling has just turned right around. I'm not, I'm not getting nothing for it right now. And I have no idea what's going to happen in the future.
So, well, just to correct a misimpression here. In previous budgets that had been approved, both attendants were together for twenty-eight thousand.
Yes.
This time we've split them apart. It wasn't an error in past budgets. It was just maybe the way it was tracked as we were preparing a budget sheet.
Yeah, I think it was just like a labor item or, you know.
So now we've separated manager from the, from.
Right. It's kind of way highway was.
Yeah.
Highway, the labor was all lumped together for years and years. And then last year we broke it down into each individual.
So I thought I had a budget in between after it had been split out that was higher than this though, but maybe I'm wrong.
You're, you're looking at the budget sheets. I'm looking at the, the town report, which actually has a past budget. So.
It should, but yeah, okay.
So it wasn't an error that we made in the past years.
It was just we've had them together.
Yeah.
I see. Okay. Good explanation.
I'll take that error.
No, you don't get it.
It would be a significant move to the morale.
Okay. And the last one on there is SWAC.
Yep.
Which was eighteen thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Wow.
So in the end, my budget is up one thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars.
Oh, my God.
Goes to my church.
Okay, perfect.
Good. Any questions on any of that stuff?
Nope.
Very big.
I don't. Any of the board members have any?
No, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Have a good evening.
Oh, yeah.
Why not?
Fire.
Well, you've got a competent guy here.
I know. I gotta leave him. With the wolves.
Carlson man can handle it.
Oh.
Okay. So next on the line would be Mr. Carlson or Mr. Dalvanyery go.
Mr. Balti have come up.
And I don't know, was Chris on?
Yes, I am.
You don't throw up with a phone number. You show up with an iPhone.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sharon, you want to do this? Who wants to do this or what?
Chris is on.
You can answer the questions.
Okay.
Much better than I. So I went through, I'm comfortable with that.
Let's get, yeah, let me get it up here so I can find it. Gun and highway fire. Oh, baby. Is that one page?
Yeah, this is single. Or there's two.
Okay.
Is it one page?
Two, but there's nothing on the second. No, I gotta find the first one. I got.
I had it.
It's only one page.
Oh, it is only one page. I don't have two.
That's why we don't have.
Just one page.
Second.
All right, Chris, go ahead.
All right, uh, the first one, vehicle fuel, we left, left the way we had it, sixty-five hundred. Um, vehicle maintenance, equip, equipment maintenance. We left at twenty-five thousand. Building maintenance, we left at seventy-five hundred. Electricity, we left at six thousand. Telephone, uh, we left at twenty-five hundred. Water and sewer, we dropped it five hundred bucks to fifteen hundred. Fuel for the buildings, we left at ninety-five hundred. Cable service, we left at five thousand. Office supplies, we dropped it a thousand dollars to seventy-five hundred. Um, SCBA maintenance and equipment testing, we left at nine. New equipment, thirty-five thousand. Insurance, we left at four. Salaries, we added six percent to last year's, which brought it to sixty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-five. So that's up uh, three thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars. Social security, we dropped five hundred dollars down to six thousand. Training, we dropped two thousand dollars. It's down to one thousand dollars this year. Uniforms, we dropped a thousand. Uh, medical, physicals, we dropped five hundred. Fire prevention, we left at fifteen hundred. Dispatch services, we left at two thousand. Uh, the dry hydrants, we knocked it down to two fifty. Miscellaneous, we left at twenty-five hundred. Uh, administrative salaries, added six percent, which brought it up one thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. And the daytime wage, we added nine thousand dollars to bring it to twelve thousand. So with everything we cut out, we cut out five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We added nine for the daytime. Um, so our total budget increase was eight thousand, ninety dollars, bringing it to two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four.
Thirty-eight or thirty-two, Bill, or Chris? Thirty-two.
Two thirty-eight, two thirty-eight, seven fifty-four.
Uh, doesn't, doesn't say that on our sheets.
No.
Um, we can do the math.
Well.
What are the, what are the questions on the budget before we get to totals? Let's take questions or comments.
A, a question that I had asked before, it looks like the daytime wage experiment is working.
It is, yes. It's bringing us a few more members during the day. So it is working.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
How did you, in, in conjunction with Mary's question, just out of curiosity, how did you figure the twelve, the nine increase? I mean, what did you base it on, Chris?
Well, the last, the few months we've been doing this, it's been an average of about a thousand dollars a month. So
Okay.
Twelve months in the year.
Yep. Okay. And uh, my next question is, what, what does the new equipment line contain that you keep it the same? I mean, do you have projections as to exactly what you want to buy or could you drop that?
Uh, I'd rather not drop it. It's, you know, we need to buy new gear this year for a few people. Um, you know, gas for the meters to test, um, you know, it's been that number for as long as I've been doing this, so I'd rather leave it alone.
A huge one, Donald, was we had to replace hoses, like nine thousand dollars replaced hose.
Okay.
So that was a huge.
Are, are, are you, are you guys still doing like the certain number of sets a year every year? We used to do about five sets every year.
Yeah, they got to rotate under the.
Right.
Under the, under the. Ten years, ten years rule.
Standard.
Ten, ten year rule?
Yeah, and this is, it's the same with pagers.
Yep.
So you have those revolving costs that are there.
And those have, I mean, gear's gone up. I think, I haven't got the bill, but I believe it's going to be about a thousand bucks a set since last year. So.
Yeah. Isn't, that's all that.
Oh, yeah.
Is it the same on breathing apparatus too?
So those, right, we bought them. So we're, you know, it's just maintenance on those now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those have, but in order to meet the NFP standards, the gear has to be changed every so many years. So you take the number of men and divide it by the years and usually come up with that five number.
Yeah.
Five to six every year.
What's the vehicle maintenance, uh, what's a vehicle maintenance number entail, Chris, at twenty-five thousand up top?
Uh, it's.
Cause your actual was twenty thousand.
The truck's getting inspected. If there's anything wrong with the trucks when they go to Earl's, it's also for equipment. If there's, we got broken equipment.
Okay.
So.
With the recycling of one truck and, and a, and a brand new one, shouldn't you figure that it would go down a little bit?
Because the other one's got a year old. It doesn't work that way.
The engine too is getting tired.
Yeah.
And that's the next one we replace. So that one, you've had a few issues there. So.
So, okay.
Yeah. And, and that is, and that is all the department's gear. I mean, that's everything from chainsaws to, I, I mean, that's everything. They, they, it's all lumped together in that one.
I was just trying to help you three percent out, Chris. That's all.
We approve as presented and I would not sweat the total. I'll just.
It's two thirty-two.
It's the two thirty-two.
Yeah, I added all the lines that came up.
You've already done the math there, Kurt?
Yeah, I typed it all.
Okay, Chris.
And the calculator over here.
The motions been made and seconded to approve the fire budget at two thirty-two, two fifty-four. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Any opposed, hearing none, unanimous and fire budget is approved. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say something before we go any further. I worked with Dell and Chris on this budget. They worked real hard. I don't question anything that they've done. They've done a good job. You know, Joey and, and know just how expensive and what, what needs are.
Cheap about firefighting, unfortunately.
Thank you, guys. But there's something awful expensive about not doing it right.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, guys.
Have a nice evening, guys. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Recreation, the fire goes there. Ah. The next one I'm going to do is police so that Ed can leave in case he gets called out. Uh. Dave, you will not, you will not get called out. There's no snow tonight. Go. In spite of your fears of the weekend.
If it fits, you can have it. If not, I'll just do something else.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's see where the.
Sorry. I heard on my scanner, the description of the same, sounds like the same description they showed in the paper. Certain gentleman down at. South of the city. Or no, where was? Where was he shoplifting this time? And I think it was this afternoon.
Yeah.
But the description was the same as those pictures in the paper.
Okay.
Or on.
Police budget, we have both our first constable and second constable, uh, on the Zoom call and police chief at Dumitch will join us now. For yours, guys.
Glad. Okay, so. Uh, one thing I didn't put in the last one thing is a fifteen hundred dollars off the police reports. We average that roughly in action reports that people request.
Ed, I don't know. We have an updated copy that Bill printed for us. So everything we talked about this morning is in there.
Okay, then, yeah. So just go over expenses then. Social Security went up to twenty five. Our salaries went up six percent. We don't have a part time officer. I adjusted the overtime from seventy five hundred to ten thousand because we're just getting busier and, uh. And I, this last, uh, fiscal year, we use the constables to augment, uh, the police force to, to do, uh, patrols. So that was that there. Admin staff up six percent, communications. Uh, uh. We went to twelve five. We've been, we had to increase it to twelve five because we, we got a radio system in anticipation of the, uh. While we had the letters from the state saying that they were, dispatches are down. We had to take care of ourselves more and they weren't able to do what we wanted. So. We got our car to car radios that work off from. Internet, I think it is somehow. They work off the internet that way. So that would. That's, I ran by Joe. That was another twenty five hundred dollars a year we had on that. Uh, supplies and uniforms kept from the same. Equipment. Equipment, we went up for two reasons. That was for the, uh. Tasers, the, whatever that is, I think it's like a little over five thousand dollars a year and also for the, uh. Body cams that y'all voted on because we're releasing both of those items at this point in time. The vehicle purchase leasing is for our new cruiser. Replace my cruiser.
We want to just have a discussion at that after we get to the end here on the lease. We, we have a discussion to ask the board about. On that.
Fuel maintenance, we went up to twenty just simply because, uh, we're averaging about. Uh, another, usually it's between six and eight hundred, we're up over a thousand dollars a month on fuel right now. Training, uh, a lot of it has to, the slight increase there is because, uh, I need to send Angie to. Nazar training, National Association of School Resource Officers. I can't do it this fiscal year, but I told her I would try to budget so she could go to the, that training. Should go at least once every couple of years. Uh, vehicle IBO, that stays the same. Health insurance I see is up. I don't have much control over that. This, we're trying, retirement stayed the same and the K nine program stayed the same. So with our, whatever our, with our income, uh, the net budget is five thirty five, four sixty eight. And that's a twelve percent increase. Or is that? Yes.
Okay, there's.
Joey had a.
So, so those. Joe's got a discussion on the.
Yeah, so. Uh, we had a, we got together this morning. Ed and I and Mary was here and we talked about, um, the, the lease of a vehicle. Um. The monies that we, um, receive from Cortina, there's a seventy five thousand dollar amount they gave us for. The past, um, I guess they'll call it inconvenience or whatever it was. We got that money. Um, I'm under the understanding that that's unrestricted money because it is not taxed and it's not earmarked for anything. And I thought that a good use of that and a tax saving, um, thing for our community. So as not the tax taxpayer would be to buy the replacement, edge replacement cruiser out of those funds. We have the, um. Twenty two, five per month for operating, uh, expenses for the, um, designated patrols at the south end or wherever they seem to be occurring because. As these guys do a better job on the south end, the, um. I don't know perpetrators are moving. So they, they move, our boys move with them and they're following them around. So. We've got that handled pretty good, but we, we never really discussed what to do with it. And I thought. Um, this would be a good utilization of that money to relieve the tax burden. It's not a lot, but a lease would be. Three years or five years, depending on whatever that. So if we were to just buy the car outright or the vehicle outright that he would like. We save a little bit on the tax. So, um, that would actually lower the budget to five twenty five and we would be putting. Um, the Cortina's money to a, what I think is a really good use for our town in, in helping to, uh, you know, try to keep this down as much as we can. So. Um, I wanted to see what the rest of the board thought. Um, you know, like I said, we discussed that at length this morning and we thought that would be a good use of that because. You know, we got it. Um, a lot of the, some of the wear and tear on that vehicle is as a result of all of this stuff going down here. So.
How do you feel?
Other comments from, from board members?
I agree with.
Board members.
Yeah, I think so too.
Kurt?
Yeah, how are you feeling about that?
I would agree. I'm, I'm good with, uh, keeping the budget down.
Yeah.
Well, there's some intangibles that can also reduce this budget and unfortunately we can't. We can't plug them in here now, but I, I did receive, uh, a note from Bill this afternoon. Cause we had requested, uh, we had requested a meeting with. Oh, come on. Ah, I hate it when this happens. I don't know why this doesn't come up. We had requested a meeting with Lyle, um, uh. Jepson, uh, concerning that these additional ARPA funds. And he can meet this Thursday. I think it's at, I can't bring this thing up for some reason. It's not, it's just not. So it's not, maybe?
They tend to be uncooperative, Don.
Huh?
Those things tend to be uncooperative.
Oh, it's, it's, I don't know what it's too selected. Uh.
Your finger.
Oh, wait a minute. There it is. Uh. I had it on the wrong thing. So, uh, the, I wanted to. Lyle has time Thursday, the fifteenth at three thirty, Mary, who had asked.
Yep.
I. And anyone else is certainly welcome to come. It's not really necessary because we can. We can relay the meeting to you, but we're going to be here. He can come here at town hall at three thirty on Thursday, the fifteenth.
I thought we were earmarking the ARPA funds.
No, 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 this is additional.
This is what we talked about Tuesday night. There's, there's, the county has monies we haven't spent. So I guess towns can go after.
Well, it's state money.
Or state money too, whatever's out there.
I've, I've gotten some preliminary information on some, on some things that we. It's kind of like a rubber band. You can stretch it only so far and you know, the criteria are there.
Yeah. So what would we be looking at with that?
Well, K nine, K nine came up in the discussion. So there, there, there's a possibility that we might, uh. Be able to alleviate four thousand in the K nine program. Uh, there's, uh, there's money in there for. Police equipment and I don't know exactly what it is. I mean, this is what we need to find out.
Okay.
Lyle's just a facilitator. So there's a, there's a woman and I don't know her name right off. She's the. Commerce and economics secretary, I believe for the state. She's the one that basically is. Guarding these funds and we'll find out what the application program is and what the.
So theoretically, we might be able to get some money to.
And. And we could get some more money for the, um. For the emergency management section. Of our police building and we may be able to get some money for equipment. That's in the building. We can't get it for the building. We've already designated the ARPA funds for that.
Right.
But there's, there's equipment money there. And I mean, they're dying, they're dying to see us. Ask for these funds because they want to allocate them. So, I mean.
Need is out hardy not to.
So the only things that you've mentioned so far would be the four thousand dollars for the K nine program because the other things would be. Not budget items. They would be capital items.
The equipment might be if there's, if there's money for equipment, maybe we could.
How speculative do you want to? Be and that's, you know. Um.
Well, we can't put it in this budget now anyway.
No.
Well, we'd know, but, uh.
Well, if you.
Talking about things like uniforms and radio equipment and. Uh, things like that. And I mean, uh, you know, we'll just have to see whether it fits or not.
If we knew by the. Fifteenth of January, what we could actually use the funds and I just don't know what, if there is a, um. Application process that we would have to go through.
Well, there is.
So, yeah, so you don't know.
We haven't been given any information. That's why, that's why we're.
Why, I guess you find out on Thursday and then you can come back to us and we can decide. Cause maybe it won't be this budget, but because these ARPA funds have a life span, it might be the next. Might be next, not, it might be a year from now when we're sitting here, we can say, we can offset twenty five thousand or something, but it'd be good to know.
Is that just, uh, equipment or?
But there's, what they're saying, but you know, you know, it's, it's hard to speculate when you don't get all of the information that you need.
Yeah.
All these questions are good questions that should have, we, we should have actually had those all in front of us. Here's the amount of money. Here's the application process. Here's the categories that you can use. Here's the criteria we're going to use to give it out. This is the total amount of money. We don't know any of that.
I mean, I think if these processes were, if the processes were a little. Less confusing, I think the monies would get used.
You think so?
Because I think what happens is people just kind of at some point to just throw their hands up in the air and said, the effort isn't worth the outcome. And then they walk away.
Well, it's.
But we, we ought to, we ought to research it and find out. Like I say, if we can't apply it to the. Budget we're working on. If it's the next year's. One, well, then. Wherever it is, we'll take it. So that, that'll be good to know.
So do we hold on the police budget for now?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think, Mary, that we're going to have an answer in time.
Yeah, you're not going to get those funds.
I don't think it's going to be able to do the budget starting next July, but it might be the pre, the. One after that or something we might be good for. So.
So we go with what we have, except we drop it. Ten thousand dollars and take out vehicle purchase lease.
And go with five twenty five, four sixty eight.
What I got.
So moved.
Where, where, where are we now? Which line?
By that.
Which line changed of vehicle purchase lease?
What's that?
Which line changed?
We're, we're taking the lease out.
Zero two five, one, four, five.
Taking it totally out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, um. Then that drops the total down, which is pretty good.
Five, six, four.
Yep. That's not too bad.
What are you going to go with for another cruiser head?
Just truck.
Truck.
So he can chase those guys.
Uh, I think, uh. Ford has a fifty pursuit package and, uh.
Yep.
I want to say GMC or Chevy, they might have one too.
So, so we will hook you up with the fellow that Bill said, um, what's his name? Terry Williams? Through the state.
Yeah.
Chuck. Anyway, that's. Would be the avenue I would go through the state. Like we have bought the center altless pickup and we bought the five fifty for the highway and. The proposed one, new one that we are looking at would be go through that same process.
I'm not even sure if we can get one because I know they closed all the bids. Last year or this, earlier this year. So we may.
I think now that we have a plan, it would be in your best interest to pursue this. Um, do, do we need to do a formal vote to approve that money for the truck?
We might, because it will be out of this, this one year, we might want to wait and do that at our regular select board.
Right, regular meeting.
Yes, I think we do need a formal.
We, okay, but we just do that at a regular meeting.
Right.
Approve those funds to be used for that. Okay. That answers that. So. So.
So you're good with all that? We'll recalculate the net. General budget change unless somebody's already done it. I.
Five twenty four, four sixty eight.
Five twenty five, four sixty eight.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean the percentage.
All the percent, that part.
Will go down, probably go down almost to ten, I bet.
Yeah, well.
What is ten out of?
Well, no, it's, uh, I don't. We've been wrong on that.
Ten is, well, one fifth of ten is two and two from twelve is. Ten percent. So I would say it'd be pretty close and.
I don't know. I'd like, I want, I think I, Kurt, did you add all the numbers up and then subtract the income please?
I did too.
Do you, did you?
I got the same number you did.
Okay.
Five twenty five, four sixty eight.
Okay, cause the five, uh, so the, the actual budget is going to be. Five sixty four.
Right.
Zero six eight.
Right.
And then we deduct the, um, income and that is, um.
Thirty eight, six.
So we take that out and you get the, um. Five twenty five, that's the amount to be raised by taxes. Have to be. Careful about making sure we get those things in the right places.
Okay. All right.
Cause I think any ARPA funds or any of that stuff will be in a later budget, but it'd be our benefit to find what we can and can't do with.
Sure.
And what's out there. Um, did we make a motion and?
I did.
Anybody second?
I don't know.
Sharon?
Okay, Sharon checked seconded it.
Okay.
Any, any further discussion on the motion?
I think it's eleven and a half percent if I did the math.
One and a half?
Eleven.
Earn, yeah.
One and a half off.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's not too bad.
Thank you very much. Probably type that in, right?
Ten percent. Rate of inflation.
It'll be ten and a half.
Yeah.
It was eleven, it was eleven point five is what the, the math came out to be. Oh, no.
I'm not calculating the percentage.
Forget about it.
The budget, the budget will not. The budget went up approximately fifty. Seven thousand dollars. That would be approximately ten percent. If you take five sixty four and subtract five oh seven, you come out with just about fifty seven.
Well, somebody will do the calculations exactly. It's in the ten percent range.
Yeah, that's not.
With what we've been through this year, I don't think that's bad at all, but. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, unanimous again. Police budget is approved at five sixty four, oh, six, eight. Thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you.
Did, uh. The constables have anything to add?
They're on a different budget.
Yeah. Yeah, they'd be in general, Don. Theirs is in general.
Oh. Yeah, wait. Oh, yeah, that's right. Thanks for, uh, reminding me. And both police have done. And. Our very patient road commissioner. Thank you, Dave. How did today go? By the way, got any comments or whatever before we start?
No, it went well. Um, we hit the ground running. We, we're in at three. All right. Well, no, I, I came in at three. We started at four. Um, and just.
And you're still awake.
Five times, we yesterday and today. It was just one of those things that just.
Yeah.
It was two inches of snow and it just never stopped.
Right.
Slow, tedious, just drive around and around and around and around.
And it got icy in the first half inch.
Yep.
And the rest of it didn't matter.
Right.
It was all downhill after that.
Yep.
Okay, no problems. Equipment's running good.
Yeah, we're still up and running.
What is it? Friday? We're supposed to get a nor'easter?
Yeah.
Friday Saturday.
Friday into Saturday.
Thursday night.
Day, Friday, Saturday, possibly into Sunday.
Mm hmm.
Big mess of stuff coming in of the Midwest and some rain and stuff coming up from the south and they're gonna meet around Pennsylvania on Thursday.
Oh, great.
And they can stay.
Not gonna.
Long range for long range forecast has snow twenty two through twenty five or six.
Yep. It's it's here.
Yeah, no, it's here.
It's here.
We 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 got a pretty good cushion in the front of this thing. We're gonna pay for it on the back. Called W. It goes. So here we are in the highway budget. Find it here. There it is. Go ahead, Dave.
Get cold in here.
What's that?
It's cold in here.
No, what's your jacket?
Not overly warm.
I'm gonna put my jacket on.
I don't. I'm not. We're not in charge of temperature.
No.
No, that was.
I think Bill hid the.
Bill's not here, so I could get up.
Is that heat pump working or what's running the heat?
Probably listening on the heat pump.
He'll know.
Yeah, it's a little cool for that.
I don't know. I'm not following up to people. I'll put my jacket on. I have a torn rotator cuff and it hurts. Sorry about that.
That's happening.
Okay.
Okay, off we go. We'll start at the top with the anticipated income. Um, we went with a hundred and twenty thousand uh state aid. No idea what it's gonna be. They probably don't know yet either. Uh, for state grants, uh, we have a hundred and sixty K set up in front of us.
So that's that's the remainder of the two hun. That's the second grant. The first one was used for the culvert was two hundred thousand. That had a ten percent match, right?
We got a we got a hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty. This is the second grant. This is a paving grant and it's a two hundred thousand dollar grant and our match is twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Right. So, okay.
I think the other one was twenty two, Joe.
No, I think that one was ten. We got one eighty for the culvert. Or we will get one eighty. We haven't got it yet. We we've sent the bills in and they're different. One was ten and one is twenty. So whatever that paving cost is, we'll get a hundred and I believe sixty thousand or whatever left is on us. But okay.
Yep.
Thank you for interrupting.
No problem. Uh, we just moved on the list. Uh, salt, we just kept the same. Uh, price jumped up on us this year, but we'll just deal with it. Uh, winter rentals, we kept the same. Winter contractors, uh, we went from one twenty to eighty. Um, now that we're down to just three contractors, uh, right now at their current rate. They're at about just shy of fifty thousand dollars for the the ten pay periods for the contractors. So we left it at eighty thinking. We're not sure what we're gonna do. Like we this year, we gave them a bump and we gave them a fuel stipend, but there was no money in the budget. Wasn't budgeted. So we left that thirty in there to if we decide to give them another bump, which we talked about, or another fuel stipend, at least there's something in there.
Or if we have one of those winters where it snows.
Or we have one of those winters where we get.
Hammered.
Bound it, yes. Uh, salt shed utilities, lights, camera action, uh, winter supplies. Um, winter miscellaneous, um. The sidewalk plowing, not a big amount, but we cut that because we took over the uh south end of town sidewalk plowing that the city was doing. Uh, the next few lines are salaries that.
Well, uh, wait a minute, Dave. There there's no money in the white sidewalk plowing.
Right, we took it out.
We took it out.
We're we're doing it now.
Oh, uh, all right.
We that that line was to pay the city when the city was doing the the south end stuff.
And I think last year they were charging five hundred dollars a time or.
That was a hundred.
Hundred?
Yeah, it was part of the act two fifty permit.
Yeah, but I think.
A hundred dollars a time and they felt like they were getting the short sheet on that, so they went to some astronomical number if they wanted, if we wanted them to continue. So. We didn't want them to continue.
Okay.
Uh, the next three lines are salaries that do reflect the six percent. Um, the next line is a full-time position, number three, a third maintenance guy. Um, and then the next one is the part-time position, uh, which would be somebody to run the. Roadside mower during the summer. Uh, the next line uh is overtime. That was not has not been budgeted. I kind of did a shorthand, came up with right around two thousand dollars. Per guy uh for overtime. Um, just.
It's gotta happen.
Yeah, I picked a number quite honestly. I how many times are you gonna get called out? How much are you gonna?
Uh, you don't know.
I have no idea. And that's gonna vary of fluctuate every year, but uh and then on call pay, the next line, um, we've talked about doing something in-house so that um. Each guy has a pager for a week and we pay him for a weekend. We pay him a hundred bucks a weekend to to take the phone, so I don't have to do it all the time. Um, so it's fifty two hundred. Uh, hot mix coal mix is the same, equipment rentals. Uh, highway utilities or garage utilities. I went to twelve grand. That's just reflecting uh the cost of heating fuel. And again, that's pulling a number out of the sky. Who knows?
I don't think anybody knows that one.
No. Uh, we added a building maintenance line, um, just to or upkeep on the building is, you know, it's a fairly new building and. The more you don't do, the more you defer maintenance, the more it costs you when you get to that point. So. Uh, summer supplies stayed the same. New equipment stayed the same. That's, you know, chainsaws and that type stuff. Uh, culvert replacement. So the seventy that was budgeted for uh this fiscal year was to offset the. Any cost overruns on the uh town line road culvert. So we just reduced that to fifty grand. Um, to give us some money to use as, you know, there's. I don't even know how many a ton of old galvanized culverts out there that are gonna start to run afoul on us at some point. So we're gonna need to. Kind of upgrade the culvert system as we go forward. Uh miscellaneous uh retreatment paving. Um, we dropped that a hundred thousand from the three hundred thousand um after having Andrew here for the last select board meeting and. Joe bringing up the hundred and twenty that was missed in the previous budget and he said that we can access that. So. As well use it for paving.
We go up four lines to signs and barricades. I I forget why that went to zero.
It shouldn't have been at zero.
Okay.
Sorry.
It should be a twenty five.
Twenty five, yep.
Okay.
I missed that.
Yeah, I skipped right over. I didn't even see that. Uh, road project. Put my right hand. All stayed the same. Materials, sand, gravel, so on and so forth. Uh, line striping stayed the same. Skip over a bunch of them that don't really mean anything anymore. Communications are our uh. Two-way radios. We have uh. A six-month lease for the handheld radios for the contract drivers, which is huge. Had no idea how great that would be.
Yeah.
Uh, vehicle fuel.
Um, question, Dave. We talked at length with Bill when we had this meeting Friday.
Yep.
But in anticipation of a another truck, we are going to need another radio.
Mm hmm.
I'm wondering if the twenty five, because we we deducted, you know, we figured the six months for the handhelds.
Right.
And then what the others.
But it's half only six months.
Right, right.
It's only six months, but the I think the number came out to.
Twenty two.
Twenty two hundred or something like.
We should have enough in this for that other radio because you're gonna want a radio in the new truck.
Yeah, I think it was some weird number like twenty two thirty five or something like that.
All right. I I I just thought about that adding a truck and we didn't.
Yeah, no, I thought about it when we were talking about it and then when he had he added it all up and it came out to.
Cause I, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, yep. So all of these numbers that are skipped, just so you know, the roadside mower, one ton truck, those were all maintenance items for each individual. Um, thing, the small, all of that stuff. And what we did is um if when Dave gets down to it, we we have just one maintenance line now. For the equipment maintenance. That's where all the skips are.
Right. Vehicle fuel, again, another number. It's a number. Uh, and then the the vehicle equipment maintenance, like Joe just referred to, we took the the numbers that were in for all these little things, the seven-year truck to chipper all these numbers. Just kind of pushed them all into one maintenance line. So we're not kind of cornered into. You know, only spending a certain amount of money on a vehicle that costs too much money or more money to fix. Uh, the next couple don't really have much to do with me. Training, um. I got some young guys. I need to get them some training, chainsaw safety and different things. Um, I'm hoping I can get some stuff done online, but you know, like the the game of logging is not, you participate in that and you don't. You can't do that online. So.
Yep.
I figured a couple hundred to get us going there. Um. Sidewalk grant. I'm not sure why that's there.
That's for materials.
Oh, that's right.
That we 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 discussed that at length, the postal side.
Yep.
Um, this will cover. That's it. That's another one of these crap shoots, what it what it's gonna be the um whatever that grant is, we have an it. We can either match with. Monies or labor in kind work. So.
Right.
We're we're trying to, because right now we don't know what the surface is gonna be, whether it's gonna be pavement or.
Wh- which one is this? This JP's or is this?
No, no, this is this is from the school up at Chisana.
Post road.
Post road. That's that upper post road. Yeah. Okay.
Uh, so the the cost is ninety six thousand for the whole thing. Fifty percent match, but the match can be in kind, which is gonna be most of it or monetarily, and the sixteen thousand is the monetary part. I think that's how we divvied it up.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, highway book, uh, for my time, but there's some questions as to whether that is complete or not. So we left some money in there and just to. Just just in case. Uh, engineering services. This is an oldie but a goodie too.
This is the month. The there's thirty in this current budget and there's, we were talking thirty, and this is to try to. See what we need to do to. Get our information from VHB that did the work on the connecting road between all these Ranberry and Farrell and.
Well, this is what we talked about.
Right, this is that, yes. And so we we put the thirty in, so we're gonna, I'm going to try to contact them. See where we need to be and what needs to be, if it's even feasible. Um, you know, we dropped that about four years ago, five years ago, and it um. We were so close to having them finish up, but I think costs have accelerated and I don't even know if the work they did back then is even um viable anymore. So. I'm gonna try to contact um them and just see where we are. So we thought we would put that in there with anticipation that we could try to get that project. Up and running and see if we can find out because heaven forbid some federal money should come up for a shovel-ready project.
You gotta have this to match it.
Well, this would be just to finish the the some of the designing that they were doing. Um, I have an email from Evan Dietrich from VHB that. You know, it might be a lot more than this, but I just need to see. Um, I'm confused as to where we were. I know we had spent between eighty and ninety thousand on the work they had done and I was under the impression at the time. We needed to spend about thirty five or forty that was budgeted.
Yeah.
And we had.
Yep.
To finish what that that phase they were in, that I don't know if it would allowed us to be ready to put out to grant or bid, or if it would be. Um, to the point, maybe we the the permit process would be next. I'm not sure just exactly the clarity of where we were, but it was. Brought up at a board meeting that we should drop it because towns don't build roads and yada, yada, yada. Well, find out that it we wasted eighty five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we should have spent the other thirty five or forty, you know, and and we didn't have to build the road, but we would have had all the work they did.
Plants.
We would have had all that information would was ours. And then if we wanted to put this out to bid or pursue it, or even if somebody. A developer wanted to do it, all the legwork was done. It's kind of like that other project where we're helping people with the stormwater. That we can get a grant to design this and then a company can go in and do the work. So.
We could have had Harbor Freight build their section of the road on their property when they went.
Well, they 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 did move that building for us.
Yeah.
Specifically to allow us to put the road in.
Yeah.
They they moved the building to accommodate what we want to do.
We had blueprints. They could have built the road for us.
Yep.
Or that piece of it.
That piece.
Well, and to be honest, when with the federal government sharing the way they've been sharing, if you've got a shovel-ready. You know, they all talk about shovel-ready projects.
That means having this information.
Right.
And and so I think that, you know, we need to look at doing this and and moving forward on it.
Mm hmm.
So.
Hundred and ten percent.
Yep. So anyway, so that's what the thirty is. That's that's the part of history that I've been trying to keep, David.
It's certainly better to be there than not.
Yep.
Then last but certainly not least is a new line for uh class four road maintenance, uh quarter line and uh Boardman Hill. Uh, just for grading a couple of times a year, filling potholes, that kind of thing. Um, there was never anything in there and it just. I had Fuller grade it for us uh this past October, first part of November, and he charges fifteen hundred. So I just. I'd buy two and that's how we came up with three grand. I'm wondering.
Did the city have any class four roads?
With that twenty five hundred for signs and barricades, if that number is right. That wasn't in there.
Oh, probably not. Yeah, because.
Probably not, right?
Yeah.
Uh. And we have to add the twenty five hundred. I don't know if we need to or not.
What?
Well, I don't know if the bottom line figure of a million fifty eight is right because the barricade sign was zero.
That's right.
But but I don't so.
Yeah, you'd have to add it because Bill just adds it on the spreadsheet. So.
So. Um, we may have to just go through these numbers.
What uh? It it's hard to. It's hard to understand those two numbers.
Which which two numbers, um, Don?
The ones at the bottom for net general and and.
Okay, so the 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 one million fifty eight thousand is the operating budget for highway for twenty three, twenty four. That is what Dave need is asking for.
Right.
Okay, then you would deduct only the state aid to highways. Okay, so that number should be eight eighty fifty eight, but I wanted to re-add these numbers. Because the one line was missing, the twenty five hundred for the signs and barricades. So that number may be off. So we we need to add up the, are you doing that now, Mary?
Um.
Were you doing something else?
I was doing something else.
Okay, anyway, so so that's what what that is. So. The state of Vermont gives us state aid to highways, which allows us to get a figure that goes into our operating budget. Okay, the grant for the um town line paving cannot be deducted from that. That is separate. So that's why the seven seventy whatever is 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 not right. You can only deduct the state aid. Last year inadvertently, when we started this budget process, we deducted the state aid. Plus the four hundred thousand for the two grants and it looked like we only we needed to raise five hundred thousand.
Okay, so but but the point I'm making, Joe, is that.
Yep.
If you use, if you use the actual from twenty one, twenty two, or you use the budgeted twenty two, twenty three.
Yep.
And and you go over to the proposed budget, I mean, you say you have it calculated now at like eight eighty fifty eight.
Right.
The that, all of those.
Are different.
Add up to a a significant decrease. So is the minus fifty five eleven percent? Correct? And in turn, will the budget go down fifty five?
No.
No, none.
So so if you look at that number for the twenty two, twenty three projected budget.
Yeah.
Okay, what was done was. The hunt, if you look at the top page where it shows income, there's one twenty, five hundred for highway access permits and four hundred thousand for the grants. Those numbers were added together and subtracted from the one million thirty two thousand. And and that has never been corrected. And 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 so that five eleven is is out in left field. That 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 shouldn't even show there.
Nor nor should the forty point seven two.
No, no, none of those numbers make any sense.
Okay.
No, so so and and what what we did last year, Don, last year's operating budget was one million thirty two thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars.
Gotcha.
Okay, we should have subtracted one hundred and twenty thousand from that. And asked the voters for like nine hundred and twelve thousand. But but that got missed. Um, it's it's just a transitional.
Where the one twenty comes.
That's where that extra one twenty comes that we're gonna use this year for paving.
All right.
Okay, so the the expense number is one million. Two thousand. Five hundred fifty-eight.
One million.
Which is basically just adding the twenty-five hundred to that.
Two thousand five fifty-eight, okay.
That adds back in that twenty-five hundred.
Okay, that, that got missed. All right, that, that makes more sense.
Where's the eight eighty fifty-eight coming? So. You take the one twenty off.
Yeah, so the number Mary just gave us, one million. Two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars is Dave's operating budget.
One million, say it again, two, two hundred.
One zero zero two. Five five eight.
Okay, then subtract one hundred and twenty thousand. From that. And that is a state aid to highways. And, and that should give us. It'll be about eight hun, eight million or eight hundred thousand eighty-two, five fifty-eight, I believe.
That's what I came up with, eighty-two, five fifty-eight.
Eight, eight. Two. Five five eight. And that's for the operating budget. And the proposal is, um, based on, um, talks with Andrew, talks with Don, talks with Dave, Mary, haven't talked to Sharon and Kurt yet. Is to finance the, um. New truck out of the capital improvement fund that that is, um. Okay, that is a, I don't know what you call it, but it's a, it's an okay expense and that's an okay use of that money. Um, and that will help to reduce the, the type, I mean, even if we were to.
Can we do that?
Yes. Cause that is a capital expense, purchasing of the vehicle.
Yeah, but the ballot item.
The purchase, the. The purchasing policy that we just passed. Should go. Cause we split them. We need to go read it. We're not going to vote on that thing tonight.
Right, but, but that is the proposal.
We need to look at it.
Yeah, that, this was run by the auditors, that the, the way the capital improvement fund is set up. It is anything that is of long-term, it's not for things, so repairing buildings or building, we're using seven hundred thousand toward the new building. Out of last year, what was there, um.
I remember the ballot item was pretty, I thought the ballot item was pretty specific about buildings. I don't believe it reads, the capital improvement valid item?
I thought so.
When this was set up, this, that was several years ago.
If it's in the, I don't have that.
I didn't bring it with me, so.
Um, are you thinking of last year's valid item? Or?
No, no.
Way at the beginning.
It was. He's talking about the authorization that we've got originally.
Yeah, I, I don't.
All it said was capital purchases, so capital.
And, and we ran, like you said, we did run this by Andrew to, to, um, ask if that was just the same as I did with the, uh. Things at hundred and twenty thousand or.
I don't know where the, I don't think it's appropriate to have a discussion and reinvent what a capital purchase is.
No.
Pretty well defined in the end.
But it, but you know, that, that. Needs to be. Ironed out. So that, you know, if, 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 I, I'm good basing on, you know, our conversations. Knowing that, that's the audit that said that this is like that.
But it also, uh, this budget will stand separately. Uh, we also need to, obviously, we also need to have a vote. And, and it should be at a regular select board meeting.
To do that, right, what, what my point would be.
This is separate from this budget meeting.
What my point would be. If. That isn't appropriate or isn't correct or isn't right. Then I would recommend that we put the hundred and twenty thousand into new equipment and this budget will go up by a hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah.
But I, but I'm hoping that based on all our preliminary information, we are correct in being able to do this that way.
Well, and I think it would be appropriate also that if we're going to do that, that at the. At the tree town meeting and the town meeting. That we announced to the public that we intend to purchase a truck out of the capital fund, which we would establish for. So they understand what we're doing. And, uh, and, and the. The point of that whole. Point of that exercise is not just. It's not, it's, it's fiduciary because. We, we heard the report of our own auditor telling us that. One of his concerns was that we're sweeping more money into. Sequestered accounts than we actually need to, and that we have to get to a point where we start spending some of that money. We can't just keep sweeping it in there.
I, I do believe that you folks, when, when I was absent, talked about. Um, I believe there's, well, I asked Carrie, I know there's one point five million in the account right now, seven hundred and. Some thousand have been designated toward the new building already. And there is.
Another eighty has been designated for Mike.
And then, right, and then there was a top of. Um, putting maybe another half million out of the, um, what was put into that account. Uh, July first. Toward the new building.
Right, we discussed it, we haven't voted on it.
Right, so, so there is that potential that some would go up there, so there's approximately, I think, seven hundred thousand in that account. Um, because, and most of that was due to the, um. Very healthy one percent. That, that we got in an over anticipation, that's part of that, so. This is, to me, this is an excellent way to use that one percent money and not burden the taxpayers.
Well, whatever money we have in there is going to be.
That's the whole idea.
Potentially is going to be added to by any sweep of the one percent, because we've been fairly conservative.
Right.
In, in terms of the.
Got, got another plan for you.
We got another one.
We got another plan for you here.
Actually, it's, it makes a lot of sense, so.
Um, so. I would move.
Sensible items, I really do.
Yeah, I would move that we, we, uh, approve the highway budget at the eight hundred, uh, one million, two hundred and. Two, yeah, whatever it is.
One million. What's the amount to be raised by taxes? Is it the eight eighty-two?
Right, eight eighty-two is the amount to be raised. The, the operating budget is, um, one million, um. Two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That is the operating budget.
That's a motion.
To accept that, right.
And seconded. Any discussion?
And, and just to clarify, the amount to be raised by taxes. Will be eight hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And the ballot needs to reflect that.
Yeah.
That's what we did wrong last year.
You've heard the motion, uh, both the net operating and the amount to be raised by taxes, been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously and thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you, guys.
Have a nice evening.
Ciao.
Have a safe, have a safe trip home.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Good job today.
These are the ones that are done.
Yeah. Okay, that.
I'm losing your, no.
Did we have two? Yeah, there's two.
What, since we've, why don't you explain what we think we can do with the?
Yes, so. One of the things that we're.
Are we still on highway stuff?
No, we just passed it.
We're, 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 we're all done with highway. We're moving into.
This topic, Joe?
Huh?
What, what is this topic?
The topic is, and it's, it's been a topic, so, um, at our meeting this morning, we sat down with Ed and we, we trying to come up with an idea, um. This dispatch thing is really up in the air. Um, we don't know where it's going, we don't know what's going to happen with it. And I agree with you, Don, that. Asking the voters to approve an amount of money. By taxation, that we have no idea what it is, is not probably in the best interest of anybody. So, but we need to be prepared, so. I came up with this idea, or it just, it just kind of dawned on me. And what made me think of this, and I ran it by Mary and Ed this morning, is. Um, the one percent money, um, our, our general budget shows one million, two hundred thousand in anticipated income. We, we did one ten, one point one last year, um. The last few years it has been running over, so what I would propose for you to think about as a group. Is that we put a ballot item on the ballot and, and the wording. This will be, um.
Advisory?
Huh?
No.
Advisory?
No, it, the, the, what the, what the ballot item would say is, um, shell the voters of the town and roll and authorize the select board. To spend up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For dispatch services. From any excess anticipated one percent tax. So that if we have anticipated one point two million. This year we got one point five and the voters would authorize us to spend up to a hundred and fifty thousand for dispatch services out of that excess.
I would approve that if, if, if the wording were added, should the state require this? I, I'm.
Kind of.
Whatever, the wording, something, but, but in other words.
To be, to be used if needed.
If needed, something like that, you know, so if.
Not if needed, but if required, because.
Or, or, you know, this is an.
Oh, it's going to be needed at some point.
At some point, but this way.
When, that's the problem.
And we don't know what's going to be required.
What this, what this actually allows us to do with that vote is in March, if that's approved. This current fiscal year budget at the end of June. When the one percent is tallied and say it comes in at one four. We'll say, we'll just put that, or one three, whatever it is.
Or one five.
Or whatever, you know, we, we had anticipated a hundred, uh, one point one, but say there's a couple.
Go to one two, Mary?
This year we are.
One two.
Yeah, but I, I'm looking, I'm talking, cause this would actually, by voting in March, this would actually affect the budget we're in. Because we're not specifying a budget year, it's just authorizing us, so if in this current fiscal year. At the end of June, there's a couple of hundred thousand there, instead of that just being swept into the capital improvement fund. And, and we find out we need to up to a hundred and fifty thousand, it'll be there and we won't have to tax. These, our folks in anticipation of a bill that we have no idea what the hell it is. I've, I've never liked that, so, so the, they will give us the approval to do that. And if it doesn't happen this year. When it does happen, we have that approval.
Cause it's gonna happen.
It's gonna happen, we just don't know when, because one of the points that we brought up, Mary brought up this morning is, this is a new. Bunch of people in Montpelier, it'll probably take them six months to a year to get along, in much less pass something this important.
I have been told. By certain powers that are there. That they're anticipating that it'll be a lot smoother than people think.
Okay, and we were told this morning on a email that Ed read us. So there are nine people, am I right, on this advisory committee? And they, the nine people on that committee sent a message to the legislature. That they do not have the expertise to do what they were tasked with and they're, and they're not going to, they're not doing it. They were tasked with to come up with this plan and these people don't believe they have the expertise to do it and that the state needs to hire someone. Who does this for whatever. He could read you that letter, because when I listened to that, I thought this is the most honest thing I've heard from people.
I was just going to say, Mary, if you. Both of us having been there. Is this refreshing to you? Because.
Somebody being honest?
Well, no, I mean.
We don't know what to do and we're going to tell you instead of.
Have a feeling at, at the outset of this, that that was in fact the case?
What, that they didn't have?
They were tasked with a job, they didn't have the expertise to do?
It doesn't surprise me at all.
So.
I mean, it's so.
Also means probably, if they're saying that, then it's going to push any funding need. On at least two years, so I think we're okay.
I think we're okay, but we'll have a plan if we put this article on the ballot.
My only question to you, now you guys, you.
Yeah.
First of all. Her, uh, let's get her. You guys, you got any questions or comments about?
Listening.
No, okay, my, my only question to you, cause you guys discussed it.
Yep.
What is the? What is the benefit or detriment? To making the vote be authorized out of. Out of the capital fund and letting the money sweep in there as opposed to taking it out before it even goes in.
That is not a cap, that does not need.
Operating, dispatch center would be for operations.
This is operating expense, not a capital.
Use capital funds.
And, and it would not meet the criteria of the capital. Where a truck does, but this would be something that I don't believe.
Don't we have to have, don't we have to have a spot that we'd have to lease? Wouldn't, would that fall under?
No, no, this is, this, this hundred and fifty thousand is our share of the county dispatch.
Whatever happens.
Right, um, I think they're projecting probably an annual cost in the millions, one, one point five is what I've heard. Mike, you heard any? I think, I, so the, the big, the big killer with this whole thing is I think Rutland County. Is about light years ahead of the rest of the state, and I think we could implement this thing July first if. If they would just leave us.
They would just let us lose.
We, we could get this done, because the big bugaboo right now is how to. Um, bill each community, and I believe there is a formula for the county tax. Each town is billed or is, is assigned an amount, so you use that same formula. And you take this projected number of one point five million operating expense, and that's not even. The, the equipment, I think a lot of the equipment is going to be covered under grants, and I think they, that, that some of it's already been acquired. The sheriff's department's willing to do it, they have the space, um, so this money is for. Call takers and dispatchers. Probably five, six people on duty, four, three, four, whatever it is, but there's, it, it, this, that part is easy. The thing that seems to be the problem is nobody can come up with, how do we pay for it? So what I would suggest is that the county looks at how each community is assessed their county tax, and I don't know how that's, I don't know what that formula is. But if you took a.
Joe, we suggested this right at the beginning of this.
One point five million dollar operating budget and you use whatever that formula is. And, and I don't know how, cause I think our county tax is what, like ninety thousand?
Yeah, it's per capita.
So it, it comes up, so if you use that same formula. And figure it in there, it would be a percentage for each community pays per capita, how it's done, and you come up with your, you know. And, and pretty much logistically. Communities with more people. Like Rutland Town, Killington, Castleton. Are going to have the highest rates of calls for service. Ira, Tenmouth, Maholy are going to be on the lower end. So proportionately, I think it's going to work out, but I think the formula is there. I think the problem the states have. Is they're trying to put the horse before the cart before the horse here and they're, and they're, they're missing the big thing is if they already use the formula in place. Figure out your operating, estimated operator, you could come up with a pretty close number.
Well, the problem that the state is having is they, meaning the state, does not want to pay for it. And they, meaning the state and the governor, has said he doesn't want taxation to be used to pay for it, well. He doesn't want to increase taxes. Get the money.
If, if you don't use either a county tax.
Yeah.
Or some tax, would we, would you set up a printing press and somebody's garage? I mean, I mean, it doesn't make sense, so the, the problem with the state, you know. This is where the, you know, and I, and I'm not a political person, but this is where the, the politics starts to come into it. Well, it's, it looks good for the governor. If he says, we want to have thirteen counties in the state of Vermont dispatching themselves, but we're not going to increase your taxes. And so I'm thinking he's high on something, because I don't know how you do that. You know, you know, Ed's going to hire two more police officers, but we're not going to charge the people in town.
Says, we don't want to increase your taxes, what he means is, we, meaning the state, doesn't want to increase your taxes, but we don't have any problems putting it on the property taxpayers or the county tax.
You know, and, and I don't know how our county tax is assessed, but, but I'm just thinking that that formula is in place. And maybe somehow or rather, we should try to figure out as a Rutland County, how to. Implement that into an operating budget that we're kind of guessing at and just see where the numbers come. And you can tell Castleton, well, your share is going to be ninety-five thousand, you can tell.
Well, you knew what the total was.
Right, I mean, that's what I'm saying, so. I think that you have to figure out what the need is, how many, you look at. The, all the communities and, and I don't know if everybody's coming on board, because like Fairhaven goes with Washington County. And I don't know if they're going to stay where they are or if they want to be part of it. If they don't want to be part of it, that's fine, they don't have to be. But, but whoever's part of it. You look at the total number of emergencies, you know, uh, ambulance calls, police calls, fire calls for the county and how many. Personnel it would take, you know, because right now. and how many personnel it would take, you know, because right now, I can tell you yesterday between probably eleven thirty and two, there was a few thousand in the county calls for service. People off the road, the, whatever is going on, people, you know, that can't drive and are upside down in a ditch somewhere. Did you ever notice that when they put snow and ice down, did they always put the slippery side up? Anyway, so, so I think this is, the, the, the whole thing is being blown out of proportion, and I think it's a much simpler.
Well, it is, if.
Just get out of.
Would let somebody that's competent do it, and Rutland County had one of the.
Cause, cause the downside of this, the, the downside of this, and those two guys right over there will tell you, and the other bunch that just left is, we've got really poor dispatching services at this time. This is horrendous. You know, Kurt knows, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not involved with the fire, and, you know, I have a pager and I listen to it, but it's, it's horrendous. You know, um, the delays, the, the, they don't know where, what, where they're sending people, and, and the dispatchers down there are so overworked that they don't, I don't know, and it's not that these are bad people, they're just so overworked, they don't know if they're coming or going. You can't take what used to be dispatched from four. Actually, at one point it was even more than that, you can't take that from four or five places and put it into two, and expect that less people can do the same amount of work. That just doesn't, that just doesn't happen.
No.
So anyway, that's, that was what we came up for, cause I know that's one of the things we keep talking about, um, so it's just something to think the way to fund it, it's a way to have the money without taxation. If there is no surplus, well, then we're gonna be in trouble, but history has shown, there usually is some. And, and that, that was the suggestion that, um, Mary and I wanted to present to the three of you, um, that we discussed.
Well, that makes more, that makes more sense than, certainly makes more sense than putting money in the budget to do it.
Right.
And I, and I don't have any objection to it, I think it's.
I mean, we gotta do it, and we gotta be prepared, but if we can do it in a manner that doesn't, you know, I know a hundred and fifty thousand, in the grand scheme of things, isn't a lot, but every little bit counts toward your taxes, just well, creeping up, and especially this year with the way things are going.
It isn't a lot, but dispatch is a lot, and when they finally get off the.
Chris was presenting his budget, and he said, you know, we have two thousand dollars in there for dispatch, you know, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's chuckle, because had state dispatch in the state of Vermont done their homework properly, we would have stayed with the number of PSAPs we had, and they would have charged towns
Yep.
More to help compensate for the extra help, and we could have stayed the way they were, but they allowed this to erode to a point.
We're gonna get, we're gonna have an idea, Joe, because it is a state responsibility, and they cannot abdicate it, so right now, we're in a situation where they're gonna have to run something, they're gonna have to.
Right, they're gonna have to run something, but the problem with it is, is it's.
I suggest that we, I have three items that we need to talk about at our next select board meeting.
Okay.
Okay, one is this dispatch item, okay. Another is using, um, paying for the highway truck out of the capital fund.
Yep.
And the third is paying for the new police cruiser out of the seventy five thousand dollars from Cortina. So I'm saying it out loud, hoping it will pick up and Bill will pick it up for.
Well, he doesn't have to pick it up, because I just wrote it down right now.
Okay, all right, but that's my spiel, thank you for listening.
No, it's, no, I, I appreciate that, Joe, I mean, I really do.
Creative minds.
Well, we're trying to come up with a solution to a problem that has no solution.
That is looming, and we don't know when it's going to hit or how.
Okay.
Pending, like a lot of other things the state does.
Okay.
Pending, okay, so. I guess we're on general right now.
Yep.
And this is our final hurrah, and look at that. Twenty-five minutes to settle.
Wait a minute.
Don't.
Wait.
Don't.
Wait just a minute.
Yep.
We, we're going to, we're going to slide down the general, so that we can take care of those who are in the room have taken their ti- the time to come to the meeting. That would be our first constable, Mike Delahanny, which is right here, come up and. Are you gonna present the whole constable budget, being that you're first? Yeah, but you're first, you're the first constable, who's only the second?
Well, good to see everybody.
Don't start a family row.
That's right, that's right.
Go ahead, Mike. What is yours?
All right, we are at, uh, zero three five one six one.
Six one.
Like Paige.
Paige two.
Paige two. Above transfer station, and below somebody else.
Yeah.
About thirty away now.
Right after the health officer, so this will be a very healthy.
Airport.
So, after we discussed a couple weeks ago, um, when I originally had that number of nineteen five, and then we, we lowered it, we offset it with some money from the Cortina, um, I thought when I left, that number was eleven five, but I see in here in the box here, it says fifteen seven. I like the fifteen seven number, I just don't know where it comes from, so I just wanna make sure before we go any farther, I know where that number came from.
So, do you have a projected number of hours you plan on working starting July first to next year, per week?
Yes.
Five hundred and fifty, is that what I saw somewhere?
Yes.
And you will be getting, how much per hour? Cause I know, well, actually, we had a sheet here.
We did.
We did. Where the heck is that sheet? Uh, twenty-three, twenty-four. Oh yeah, look at this.
Twenty-eight, forty-eight?
Per hour.
Twenty-eight, forty-eight, so.
Proposed with the six percent.
So, okay.
That's fourteen, two forty.
I got it.
But I just wanna make sure.
That's, I don't know if the social security is somewhere else.
No, I don't think so, I'd probably wrap into that.
Or is social security just a big general, is the one?
Oh, no, it's actually, that's right. We, it's fifteen, fifteen thousand seven hundred here.
Yep.
And if you take the five hundred and fifty and you multiply it by his projected hourly rate, it's fifteen thousand six sixty-four, and I think we write, um, we rounded it up to fifteen seven, I think that's what happened.
Did it based on hours, I know.
It's five hundred?
Hundred percent.
Five hundred hours?
Five fifty.
Five fifty, that's where I did it.
Okay, so, so that's how that number got arrived at, okay.
We can drop you down to fifteen thousand six sixty-four, just so it's crystal clear.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure, I, I was trying to do that number myself earlier.
Yeah, cause I think the social security is all in one, one sum for all of the employees in this budget.
Perfect.
But the hours has to be, I mean, obviously, if, if the hours represent the money, then the hours have to be done, so we don't want to put, we didn't want to put more hours, and that was an estimate based on what you could do.
Yeah, and, oh, I have full confidence that I'll get there, I was just, I, but last time I was here, we said eleven five, I come today to a different number, I also make sure I understood the number.
Now you do.
Now I do, okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, all right, and then.
Okay, so then, uh, first constable, uh, equipment, obviously, last year it was fifteen, proposed is two thousand, um, I said last time I was here, my vest is about to expire in like a couple of months, so that's, I don't know, chief, how much the new vest, any vest will be, but.
Yep, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's not a lot.
Okay. Uh, first constable supplies, I'll stay at the two hundred, and then last but not least, a vehicle. So, based on that fifteen seven, um, I see where I had nine, ninety-five hundred, but I, I recalculated that down to seventy-six hundred, because the fifteen seven is about eighty percent of the nineteen five, and seventy-six hundred is eighty percent of ninety-five hundred.
Okay, so seventy-six hundred instead of ninety-five?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're okay with that, Mike?
I am.
All right.
Okay.
Well, there, perfect.
Okay, no, too easy.
Yeah, well, you know, you guys are doing, you guys got a really crappy job. And we keep giving, so I'm glad that you're willing to take it and do it, because.
Yep.
That's, that's very doable.
Today, this weekend, he came out to deal with an animal problem, six cats in the car. He came out and dealt with the cats, then went to the main society, got a call today, he was the main side to deal with the cats. I gave Mike's number, he took care of the problem, that's hours of my time that I don't have to waste. When I have, I have at least seven calls on the board right now that I didn't get to today, so, or four calls on the board.
Don't we have a animal control officer?
Yeah, technically, but falls under my duties. We were a town keeper.
This would typically be called Cop John, now it's called Cop Mike.
Right.
But the fact that our constables are willing to take the time to do stuff that frees up the police officers to do stuff, I said this to Ed once, you know, running radar is not the most fun thing that a police officer does, but after the time they've been spending at Cortina, I think he's almost looking, would look forward to a day just doing something different. Yeah. That would be awesome, but anyway.
Well, the, the other key, Joe, is that although doing radar is, is a boring job, having the experience of doing it regularly makes you very, very proficient at it.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because you.
Well, the exposure to the town, seeing people out there, this, this allows our taxpayers to see that, you know, we're, you know, getting something, unfortunately, this whole south end of town thing, you know, I don't think most people in town ever get to see our four police officers, cause, you know, they're down there just trying to peace in a, in that area, and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a lousy situation, we've had thrust upon us, and and it's, you know, I'm, I'm just glad that some of it's being funded.
Well, I just, I want, uh, I want our second constable to know, and our first constable as well, because you know, you may be doing radar yourself at some point, uh, that it, it may not be glamorous, but I can tell you, having watched enough horror shows on TV, that it's not that benign a job when you don't know what's in that vehicle when you're making a traffic stop. So, just be cautious, be safe, and, you know, there's no traffic fine that's worth any injury or death, so. Anyways, JP, you're, you're up.
So, um, there's really no changes in the numbers that we went through at your last meeting, everything that's listed there on the budget is what we talked about.
Anybody have any questions for John Paul?
I don't.
Hey, that's it, you got any questions for us, JP?
I don't, I don't, and, uh, the numbers that were plugged in for the health officer, I think are very much on target. So I think we'd be good on both of those.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, JP, could you refresh my memory again on why your second constable vehicle costs went up to ninety-five hundred? I usually jot notes, and I didn't on that one.
That was based on the vehicle rate going from uh, nine fifty an hour to, I think it went to sixteen dollars an hour. The theme of reimbursement rate, yep, uh, so that's the, the reason for that increase.
Okay, thank you.
And you're, you're, uh, projecting to do more hours than Mike, ten-four on that?
My proposal's for seven hundred and fifty hours, correct, cause I also have the gate duty, I have the gate.
Right, that's right, I, I did read that in the notes from somewhere else, okay, thanks JP.
Yep. Okay, thank you, good night.
And, and that would reflect a higher cost because of the extra, the extra hours for doing the other work he does. So that's why that, and the health officer stuff is all good.
And that seven fifty is pretty much exclusively for traffic control.
Yes.
Yeah, is, you know, JP goes up, takes care of Northwood, so that's where, yeah, that's where the extra stuff is. And just so you know, Mike, if you do go out, um, running radar, I do keep a spot for you and JP Plout right there in the barnyard for you guys.
Feel free to use my driveway, my barnyard, okay?
You can always use the Russell barnyard.
Also, uh, you should check with Dave to make sure that he keeps that slight pull-off down past McKinley and before Old Wood Road, uh, plowed, so that you can pull in there as well.
So we've got four out of five of our redways covered, Kurt?
And they keep going off the corner of the soccer field, so.
Stayed pretty busy.
It needs to get pitched a little bit, cause they go off in the same spot, the road comes around in a bank, and then it turns back to Crown, and it's just enough.
I can guarantee you this, that if you drive thirty-five miles an hour, this does not happen.
No.
I can guarantee it doesn't happen.
That's a suggestion.
Yeah.
It's kind of like, well, it's kind of like.
That's, that's what I told JP when he was running radar, and people give him a hard time, tell him those speed limit signs, those are not suggestions.
Okay, all right, so here we go, guys, uh, Mike, all set.
Yep.
Have a nice evening.
Night, guys.
Night, guys.
Right.
All right.
I think this general budget would pretty much be to death, haven't we?
Barbara's here for planning commission.
Oh, yes.
Two sixty-one, two sixty-five, and then two sixty-seven, skips a number there.
Oh, yeah.
So it was level funded, um, an extra two hundred and forty dollars was put in. I, I, that equals, um, six percent of the line there for planning commission salary, so I guess that's why that was put in, okay. We, we, we rarely come close to the eleven thousand total for all of those line items, so if you need that two hundred and forty dollars back, you can probably take it.
We're, we're just, remember we said that we're tasking the planning commission and the energy committee with working on maybe getting a state grant, so you folks might be busy doing that sort of thing, so.
Oh, extra.
Keep the two hundred and forty, yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's not the six percent raise, that's just a flat.
Yes, that is a six percent raise.
Okay, okay, that's, well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Members.
Thanks, Barb.
And the members say thank you.
You have any questions of us, Barb?
No, you almost wrapped up with this?
Well, yeah, we got, we've pretty, pretty close.
Yes.
Good.
There's a couple of things that need to be added, I think. Thank you, Barb.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's pretty simple, straightforward, the planning commission budget, thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Yep.
The, uh, Mary and I had talked about some, uh, kind of a oh, what do you call it, a kind of a package increase that, we do, we've done this in the past, and I guess we thought we needed to do it again for, for some obvious reasons.
There were selected employees, because we, you'll recall that we were bumping up department heads by to twenty-five dollars an hour.
Well, we, you know, we decided on, we decided on Dell, and that's, that's in the budget.
Yes.
Um, we, we haven't decided on the Lister, Lister one, because that's gonna be a new position as of December thirty-first. And that, that number is incorrect, and Bill, well, Bill and I had a discussion, and I guess Bill used, Bill used as better discretion, thinking that we should have that discussion here before he increased it. Uh, because he, he didn't think it had been formalized, and I, and I don't believe it has either. Uh, but there will be a motive, there will be a new. Uh, but there will be a motive, there will be a new rule.
Mary, are you, are you okay? I mean.
I'm coughing, Don. I have a cold. I'm getting rid of that. That's why I put the mask back on. Yeah, thank you.
Um, the, um. So this has been calculated at whatever rate Marsha is at right now, which is not twenty-five. And so as of, well, as of January or February or March or April or May, up until June, it, it would be. As a department head, so that should be calculated at twenty-five. And if you do the six percent on twenty-five, you'll get, what was it for Dell? Twenty-six, was it twenty-six fifty? Go back to the highway budget or, you know.
You put the six percent on the twenty-five if it's.
What was it?
Yeah, dude, that's a question.
Do, do you put the six percent on the twenty-five if she's not gonna be. While she'll be, I guess, number, number one before this budget.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, cause it's.
So six months worth of, yeah, yeah.
This, this doesn't take effect until.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you think it's like now, but it's.
Yeah.
We're thinking next year.
Yeah.
Transfer, where, where is the transfer station? Where was that?
Um, it's on, there's a sheet here, Don.
Was it twenty, yeah, I thought it was twenty-six fifty.
Yeah.
And if you calculate the twenty-six fifty at, uh, thirty-two hours.
How'd you come up with?
Thirty-six?
Well, it's eight forty, thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Yeah, thirty-two, it's eight forty-eight, and then do that by fifty-two.
Yeah, it's forty-four thousand.
Forty-four nine, nine, ninety-six dollars.
Forty-four. Forty-four, zero, ninety-six.
Forty-four oh nine six as opposed to thirty-nine, six, thirty-six. Oh, that's. We gotta change that first constable vehicle to.
Yeah, drop that one down to seventy-six, right, yep.
And, and the other, the other changes were, well, I recommend. Uh, because I'm his, I'm his, well, I'm his daily supervisor and. I recommend.
His supervisor.
Yeah, yeah. We're all his supervisors, but I work with him on a daily basis and I can tell you that, uh. Bill Sweet certainly deserves, uh, an increase. Probably more than I'm recommending, but I would recommend a thousand dollars. Uh, in, in addition to the six and, uh, he's taken on many, many additional responsibilities. And he's gone way, way over and above what we require him to do. He's gone, he's done the extra mile.
Oh.
Mary's, Mary's suggest, and that's, that, that would be an additional increase. And then we thought that the clerk's office, because it had been downgraded.
Every time we have hired a new town clerk and treasurer, we have backtracked on the pay, paid for those folks. Even, and Carrie especially, even though Carrie supervises tons more things. And is responsible for supervising an employee as well.
Now, now two.
Now two, that's correct. So my suggestion for the Carrie position would be to add a thousand. For the treasurer part and a thousand for the town clerk part.
These are not easy jobs.
And the, uh, uh, and the assistance position.
Um.
Increased as well.
What Susan's position?
To be.
I'm sorry, what did you just say? Is that Susan's position you're?
Yes, the assistant, the assistant.
Thousand dollars on that.
We're doing across the board.
That turned out to be forty, I don't know.
It's, 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 it's down here, Don, it's, uh, the fifty-nines.
I, I just. I tried to, I did it and I put it on a sheet. I got so many papers in front of me. We divided, I divided the thousand by her forty hours a week and then the fifty-two to get an hourly rate. And it turns out to be about fifties. Did you get a number, Mary?
No, all I did was add a thousand on our general budget sheet.
Each one of the three.
Each one of the.
Four.
Yes.
Town clerk, town treasurer, assistant and administrator. We added a thousand to what's down there.
Correct.
Well, where's, what, where are we on the line?
It's, uh, one twenty-five, Don.
Assistant clerk treasurer is, uh.
We're just gonna bump them all up a thousand over the six percent.
Thousand to each of the numbers shown there.
Yeah.
For the first four.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that starts.
Okay, but that has to translate into an hourly rate for her. So that, that would, that's gonna go on the.
We'll let her do that, cause she's pretty good at numbers.
Yeah, we'll let them do that. That's their job.
Cause she, they gave us these, or Bill did anyway.
Yeah.
Um.
Cause you have them over here where it says, uh, town clerk is like, these are just, they're, they're not broken down into hours. Any of it, none of it's an hourly rate.
Right, it's just per annum.
Because I do believe Bill and Carrie and Carrie's two positions are salaried, right? They're not hourly.
No, they're salaried.
Right. Uh, Susan's is the only one that's hourly, right? Or is she salaried?
She's, no, she's hourly and the new one will be hourly.
Hourly as well. So Susan is the only one that we need to come up with a rate per hour.
Right, I did that and it came out of.
No. Added to the, I, I was just the, the Lister one position to bring. Marsha up beginning January first, we need, we will need to make that adjustment at our regular select board meeting. Um, to bring her up to twenty-five.
Starting first of the year.
January first.
This year. And then come next year.
Assume, assume that.
That's correct.
Put it into this budget for.
That's right. That's where we get the forty-four thousand.
Cause this budget doesn't take, so this budget is based on the twenty-five plus the six percent starting next July.
Right, and these increases that we're talking about will not start until July.
Next year, right, right.
That's right.
Right.
Because otherwise we'd have to change all of this.
Oh, don't, don't go there.
No.
That become more than.
We're not going there.
Thousand for sure.
Um, okay.
And frankly, the Lister budget already has the money in it for this current year, so.
Right, and more. Oh, and also I wanted to, uh.
That's what I, where. That was something I wanted to talk to you guys about.
Where's the, uh. Down Lister. Lister con, appraisal update. Appraisal update.
That's.
Look at, uh, oh, three, five, six, three, zero. That went back down to sixty-five hundred. As we had budgeted in previous years. And this is on our, this is on our, uh. This is on the Gail Gantik contract. Okay, so here's the answer. I asked the question, Marsha asked the question of the, uh. Of, of the V L, not the V L C T, uh, the Lister, uh, Vala. The Listers Association.
Right.
And Chris, uh, Christie Wright, uh, gave her an opinion. She's got it in her desk. We can use the appraisal money that we have in the money market fund.
To pay for that.
To pay for that. And so on.
And that makes sense because that's a.
What, Don? Well, I, I wanna speak to that.
So. The.
So what are we paying for?
We do a reappraisal every ten years or.
And are we talking about paying that way to lady the thirty thousand? Cause I have issues.
We, we're, we're talking about doing the reappraisal of the personal property and inventory, which has to be done as well as. The real estate. So it has to be done on some kind of a basis. So she's. She's got to redo her contract based on the discussion that we had in the room and she's got to become more specific as to what her billing rate is. As we discussed.
I agree, I agree.
So that, but we.
Because every time you talk to her, she, well, that doesn't include this and it doesn't include, and then if we get one of these, it doesn't include that.
Right.
I'm not happy with that.
Well.
But we can pay for it out of the reappraisal monies that we have set aside, because this is a reappraisal, it's just not for, uh, property. That's correct. But it's real, it's, or it's personal property. And as long as that meets the requirements, like we always keep asking ourselves about these other funds. That makes sense if the money's there, just as long as we're not gonna be short on the other end if we need it.
Well.
Yeah, but I don't know.
That's, that's a case of, that's a case of, do you tax the taxpayers now or do you tax the taxpayers later?
And how do we pay into that fund?
We don't.
We don't, that's.
That's paid by the state based on, uh, a per parcel fee of eight dollars.
And we get that, every year we get a sum of money.
Get about sixteen, sixteen thousand a year.
So her proposal is.
Have two hundred and some odd thousand in their account right now.
Yeah, and her proposal is we're doing whatever she's gonna do. For thirty thousand dollars per year and it's.
Well, no, 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 no.
That's what her projection.
That's right.
No, we're gonna do whatever she can do for sixty-five hundred and then we're gonna go from there.
Right.
So if you presume that she's gonna do thirty thousand of work under some very specific program. Then you've already paid sixty-five hundred under this budget. And, and the balance would be paid out of that based on her cost per unit or whatever it is. Until we decide that we're done.
There's two hundred and eighteen, if I understood from the conversations, like two hundred and eighteen.
Correct.
Um, businesses that need to be looked at.
Right.
So we need to know. Um, how, you know, the, 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 the way she charges was a little vague, I guess.
Well. But I heard, and this is what was upsetting, two hundred and fifteen businesses. She was only gonna look at a quarter of them in the first year for thirty thousand dollars. That is not cost effective. Plus, we have Marsha who is trained and been doing all of the work. And from what I could tell, pulling the records for Gail to review. And so Marsha's already there and trained. What my concern is. I think we're gonna be hit with the real estate reappraisal and I think our emphasis and money should be there. And not on the personal property at the amount of thirty thousand dollars for a one-year contract. I just assume keep it at sixty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Cause I think we're fine.
And she does what she does for sixty-five hundred.
I think ultimately, uh, and we've always done this. I think ultimately we have to rely on the competency in our Lister department to advise us what we need to do. And if she doesn't feel the sixty-five hundred does what she needs to do. What I've asked, the, what I've asked the listeners to do is on a spreadsheet. To list the accounts in order of monetary preference. In other words, the biggest accounts that would have the greatest changes. And obviously produce the greatest amount of revenue to the town. List them in order of top to bottom. It, it, it is, it, it, it seems foolhardy to me to, to let anybody lose. To do just any twenty-five that they wanna do. As opposed to doing the ones that need to be done.
Some kind of organized plan.
That's right. And there's those ones down towards the bottom of the list.
That have three or four thousand dollars.
Need to be done.
She even said that, that somebody that has only three or four thousand dollars worth of equipment, is it worth?
Right.
Us paying her to go.
No.
Right.
No, but she wanted people to report if they saw that these people got another vehicle. Or more tools, you know, so, so she's gonna get paid and we're gonna do her legwork? I don't think so. I did not trust the woman. I'm not gonna lie.
I, we do trust her, okay? Not with this particular set of numbers. She's done excellent work for the town and I don't wanna dismiss that for personal property. When we call her in on specific issues. I, I disagree that personal property needs to be, have this kind of overview that she's proposing we put this money into. So that's, I have no question about her credibility and the excellent work she's done, because I've heard nothing but good things. I didn't like her proposal and I agree with you. I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, and I don't feel like listening to her for an hour and a half telling us how wonderful she is.
I was, I was, um.
Now.
Be honest, I went, made a cup of coffee and I was talking to Rose.
Well, you had the luxury of being home.
There are a few benefits.
There were a lot of people that wanted to be there with you.
You know, it's.
So can, can I like that?
Yeah, I got it with that.
I was one of them, wanna do with that, just leave it at the sixty-five.
Yeah, uh, just leave it at the sixty-five and, uh, and then we'll find out whether we need to do more and.
Just make sure I have the right page. So for Lister two and Lister three, what do we do?
Yeah, I was looking, I was saying, there's no.
Well, no, that's there. Wait a minute, wait a minute, that's there.
It's nothing on my sheet.
Nothing on my sheet.
Okay, so where, where is it? It's in Lister Consulting.
One.
Lister Consulting over on, uh, where is it?
I don't know, the pages aren't numbered, but it's.
Darn it. It's, oh, it's last page.
Number?
Last, last page, uh. There's no, there's no number because Bill hasn't assigned it a number yet. It's right after the appraisal update.
Yeah.
Three, five, six, three, zero. It'll be assigned a number and it's under Lister Consulting because as of this point. We don't know. As of this point, the, we haven't budgeted an amount for Howard.
Sure, we have.
You know, you have.
Under our Lister payments that.
We have this page here down where it says budgeted expenses, uh, thirty-five, one, fifteen, has Lister one, and that's the one we just changed.
Right, no, 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 no.
No, okay. So, so Marsha goes from.
Cause the listeners are all over the place.
The listeners.
The Lister, um, the Lister, the Lister per hour rate has been established for all of the listeners. Okay?
Yes.
The Lister, the Lister allocation for budget has always been done based on forty hours a week for Howard. Twenty hours a week for Marsha and indiscriminate, but not very many hours for Dean.
Right.
So when Howard retires as full-time Lister. And. And he's retired, he has said, I'm retiring, I'm going home. I'll be available for consulting when and if needed. So that would be at the rate of thirty-three plus.
His, his current rate is thirty dollars and seventy-eight.
Right, you add six.
And then the six percent for this budget would be thirty-two, sixty-three.
That's correct.
And Lister two and Lister three would be at twenty-three, eighty-two weeks.
Now, that thirty-two, what was it, thirty-two, sixty-three?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
That would be the rate, the, that would be the rate that Howard would get.
If he stays.
If, no, if, when he consults.
Right.
But, but we have to decide as a board when he consults and. No, he's elected, he's elected Lister.
He'll be done after.
Twenty-four.
He gets done, he'll be done.
Just.
Well, he'll be just doing this on his own as.
Can't just work on his own at any amount of hours he wishes. That is not the way the board authorizes the salary.
Right.
The board authorizes the salary based on the amount of hours that the board authorized.
But Howard's not giving up his elected position.
Given up his full-time position.
Yes, so you would just.
We don't know what his part-time position.
But he's not consulting is the thing. He is still a Lister, so you put that under Lister two.
Can I?
Cause he's not consulting, he's still a Lister. Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
No, I was trying, remember I asked them, what are the number of hours you need to run your office?
She said twenty.
She said twenty-four. Right now it's twenty, she is, Howard is forty, total of sixty.
Right.
Okay. And if Marsha goes to thirty-two and we still leave it at sixty total, that leaves twenty-eight hours. Someone would be needed, whether it's Howard or Dean, it's once in a while or however it is.
Right.
Okay.
But. That's under the present scenario.
Correct.
But, but under the new scenario. The, the, the only person that can determine how much time is needed in the office by the second Lister. Is the first. Is the first Lister.
Not disagreeing with that. What does that bring us in saying about hours? We know that they need sixty hours where you work in there.
But she said, she has said twenty, but she doesn't know whether it's twenty hours a week for fifty-two weeks a year.
Didn't we just? Out of the, out of the Lister pod of sixty hours a week.
Correct.
Which leaves twenty-eight hours to come in some combination.
From somewhere.
Between, um, Dean and Howard. Now, we know Howard can't do any in January. Under the terms of the retirement with the state of Vermont. Um, so.
When Howard.
That's right.
Coming into work as a consultant. Is it as an elected official?
Yes, yeah.
Until his term is up?
Yeah.
And when's his term up? Okay.
He's got a full year.
He's got a full year that he can work.
Right.
On a part-time basis for it.
What I'm saying is that. Under the situation that he's in, being retired. It isn't he that determines how many hours he works in that office. It's going to be the head Lister that determines.
Be the office that says.
And if she needs him twenty hours a week for the whole year, she'll use him that. But if she doesn't, she's not. So that's why.
And so would we be putting that, say, sixty hours? Um, and right now the head Lister is gonna work thirty-two, so that does lead up to a possible twenty-eight.
Right.
But not necessarily needed twenty-eight.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so we're budgeted for the rest of this year for six months. You don't decide when anybody comes in.
I, I've.
So how do we budget?
We put it under consulting because we didn't, we didn't determine that. I thought Howard determined that when he, not when he came into our meeting, he said. I would be willing to consult. So rather than put it under Lister where if you put it under Lister. And you put an amount of money down there. That means he can draw that regardless of what we say or anybody else says because we have budgeted for a Lister. If you put it under consulting, then he only gets it if he's asked to provide it.
When I asked him about it, he said, I am a Lister till twenty twenty-four.
Well, that doesn't have anything to do with what I'm talking about.
Right, but he's still, he's still got work, the hours to pull the check.
Still, he's still, he's still.
He's gotta put in a pay slip like we've asked everyone to do and it's gotta be approved by us.
But he doesn't want to be in the same position he is. He wants to be able to do his remaining thirteen months as a consultant. That's, okay, and, and there's twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Once you decide that you wanna, that you're gonna be a consultant, then. The control of how many hours you put in is not in your hands, it's in.
It's when you're needed. It's based on a need basis.
That's correct, because what I didn't wanna see.
If, if Howard.
What I don't wanna see, uh, uh, and.
He told me he wasn't strictly a consultant. He was a Lister.
Yeah, he's still a Lister.
Lister, but the, you, you don't, Sharon, I don't think you understand.
I understand quite well.
No, you don't.
Yes, I do.
Actually, I think she does.
No, she doesn't.
Where?
He is an elected Lister, but there is one. Board that's in control of the salary and the hours and that's right here.
Well, that's.
Not the Lister. The Lister cannot work independently on his own and expect to be paid. Any amount of money unless this board authorizes it and that's the way it's always been.
Done. That man is a wealth of knowledge.
But if he's a consultant, he can set his hourly rate.
Listen.
If he's a consultant, Don, he's a subcontractor.
God bless us all.
This is a very interesting arrangement that. He is choosing as an elected official to kinda step back and not do as much.
Yeah.
And he wants to do it on a as-needed, I think, basis.
How do you determine as-needed, Joe?
The same way they do with Dean.
This is.
They already do it.
They do it with Dean.
That's right.
They do it with Dean.
So, so whatever.
Nobody tells Dean when he comes in or when he can't.
He does it with Dean because he is the head Lister and he's always been the head Lister with Dean.
I'm saying the Lister's office already does it with Dean. He's a Lister. Dean's a Lister.
Yeah.
So a salary should be under the Lister line item and Howard is still a Lister, which means Howard's salary should still be under. The Lister lines. If he's a consultant, he's a subcontractor and he's not. He's an affected Lister.
He's elected a Lister. Have so much to do with a subcontractor as it has to do with who is in control of the consulting. This is what people can't seem to get in their minds is that the town clerk, okay, the town clerk is an elected official. The town treasurer is an elected official. The town clerk and the town treasurer do not bill us for whatever hours they want.
Their salary.
Salary, their salary is determined by the board of the select board.
Right.
Their salary is determined by the select board.
That means, so, I, I understand that part and I think we all do. Technically, when you use the term consultant.
Yeah.
Or something, it is, it is construed as a different, um. Position than being a Lister. That, when, when he's telling me, I mean, if he wants to work part-time. As a Lister to help out when things, and that is fine, but if he's gonna do consulting. That means when they get in trouble and they don't understand something, they call him in, but basically now you only gonna have one person in that office. On a regular basis. And right now we have two there for a total of sixty hours a week. I don't know how this is gonna work because technically we need Howard in there or someone. For up to twenty-eight hours and it shouldn't be as a consultant, it just should be as a part-time Lister. Kind of, it's a reversal of roles. Marcia now is a part-time person, Howard's the first full-time.
Yeah.
They're gonna reverse role. She's gonna be the full-time person, he's gonna be the part-time and he would be expected. In my opinion, to work so many hours a week and, and.
He did say he would come in, he would come in whenever he was needed and he would work from home also.
Right, but the thing is, is. How, that determination of hours, if, if right now two people are putting in sixty man-hours a week. And we're gonna have one person doing thirty-two, there's a twenty-eight hour shortage there of man-hours. I mean, to me, this is not going to be consulting. This is going to be a part, doing the job part-time, like what Marcia does.
Well, so I think we're assuming too much, Joe, because we haven't, we haven't heard, well. Partly, partly my fault, partly his, uh. We haven't heard any details.
After what he wants to.
A man himself as to what, what he, what he, what he thinks he wants to do. And, and what he thinks his role is once he retires. And, and it's always been my assumption, and I may be wrong, it's been my assumption that. He is not gonna be able to sit at home and decide on his own how many hours he's gonna.
That should come, that should come from the office. This is what we need and it's been established for the last number of years that we need sixty hours.
Yeah.
So those hours gotta be made up. So does he want to work after this January thing when he can't work? Does he want to work twenty-eight hours a week for the town? As a, as basically the number two Lister and. He'll be educating and he has been educating Marcia as to what needs to be done. Howard has more knowledge. Marshall's been doing it for years, so she is well on her way, so, um. I, I, I don't know how we're gonna actually do that.
Well, so we have budgeted for this current year, which is what we're talking about for the first half, I mean, for the next half.
Six months.
Yeah. Well, you know, you, you have, you have a Lister that's online right now. If you wanna talk to her, you can.
Um, so I'm looking at the budget for this year that we're in, we've budgeted sixty-seven thousand, four hundred, ten. We know we're paying Marcia, we've, we've gotta make the motion at our next meeting, twenty-five dollars an hour. Time, and not, this is before the six percent, cause we're not starting that year yet, twenty-five an hour. Times thirty-two hours. Um, so that's eight hundred dollars a week. Twenty-six weeks. So that's twenty thousand, eight hundred for the balance of the year.
Right.
Um, so if we take the sixty-seven, four, ten, divided by two. We have thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and five for a half year for the Lister's office. If we pay Marcia, um, at twenty-five dollars an hour, twenty, that, that would be twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars. Out of the thirty-three, seven, oh, five. So.
So Marcia would have to be here.
No, we're not there yet. Wait, so that leaves twelve thousand, nine hundred, five dollars to pay Howard. And for the next six months, Howard and Dean and whatever combination.
Whatever.
So that's, that's where we are. I mean, that's the budget.
That's, that's what's current.
That's the current. And then what we do is we just project on top of that the six percent increase for the Lister pot. Marcia gets the forty-four, oh, ninety-six that we've been talking about for the coming year. And the rest is available for the other two Listers.
What is the rest? What, what do you got? So for the rest.
Because we don't have it under, under Lister two, but we've got it under Lister Consulting, twenty-seven, seven, seventy-four.
Well.
It, I, yeah, I dislike the consulting thing.
Yeah, I don't like.
And, and.
Can I tell you one thing that Howard's told me? He would be more than willing and that's what he had planned to do. That he would. Help to train another person that would take over after his term. So that they would be ready. To, to be the second Lister. And, and.
And we understand the offer and we appreciate it. The problem is, there's no vacancy.
No.
There's no vacancy and because it's an elected official.
I know. No, you're right.
But, now, 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 when the, now is when the consulting prior to this comes in. When Howard's term is up in twenty twenty-four and somebody is elected to that position. And there needs to be some education or some help.
Bingo.
You can't expect Marcia, who's gonna be the head Lister, to take and try to train somebody with everything, plus do the work. So this is when you ask Howard on an hourly basis to come in or consult with this new person.
You're absolutely right, but that cannot wait a year. I'm telling you right now, that cannot wait a year. That has to happen now.
But who are you gonna train?
But there's been suggestions, there's been suggestions that when Howard goes. And, and I don't know whether that means when Howard retires or when his term is actually up, that Dean would leave as well. Now, if Dean left, there would be a vacancy. Then a person could come in, whether we.
We don't, see, unless, unless you go through this whole thing, and I don't know if we even can do the appointed thing. I thought we were told we couldn't. But I don't remember what the lawyer told us about.
We would have to have a townwide vote.
If we do the townwide vote and change these positions to appointed as we did with the road.
No, 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 no.
Right.
No, just a minute, just a minute. You're misinterpreting me, Joe. Dean is in an elected position right now. If he resigns his position, there's a vacancy.
Right.
Yeah.
We always fill vacancies by putting an ad in the paper saying, there's a vacancy in a listed position, there must be a town resident. We can appoint somebody to fill the balance.
Yeah, yes. The point is, we can't pre-select somebody to teach in over, in the next.
Oh, we use the hiring process.
No, but what we, that's if they resign, but if, if. Howard stays until the end of his term, a year and three months from now, then that vacancy will be filled by an election. We have no idea who that person is. They may have some experience, they may have little, but this is when you need a consultant. To come in and work with these new persons. And, and in that timeframe, cause Dean's term won't be up at the same time. Dean decides he's gonna step down. Now we appoint somebody, now we got two newbies. And Marcia's got her hands full with an office with two green people. This is when you need a consultant.
Can I?
Yep, that's my thoughts.
I have a proposal. And I think some of the problem occurred when we split out Lister one, Lister two, Lister three. We've not done that. With previous budgets. So here's what I propose we do. We go back to Lister. Lister's office or however it was, Lister's plural. And we, for this year, it's sixty-seven thousand, four hundred, ten. We add the six percent increase. To that, the six percent increase brings it up to seventy-one thousand, four, fifty-four, sixty. That is consistent with what we've done before. We're adding, well.
Say that number again, Mary.
Okay.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one thousand, four, fifty-four, sixty.
And that would be under the list.
That would be under the listers. And if Marcia, after, you know, working for thirty-two hours feels that's sufficient, great. The rest is for whoever else. If she finds after six months that she'd prefer to go to, I don't know, thirty-seven hours. That gives us the overall number and then she gets paid at the higher, the twenty-five dollars an hour. Plus the six percent on top of that because we'll be in the new fiscal year.
Yep.
And whatever is left is there to spend on Howard or Dean or some combination.
Or whoever.
We're being consistent. We're, we're treating everyone the way we have all along. We're giving Marcia respecting that she's gonna be taking on more responsibility, the twenty-five dollars an hour plus. The six percent increase when we get into the next fiscal year, but instead of trying to parcel out who gets what. We don't know. It's got six months to go to see how things are working. Don't call it consultant because they're all still listers. And just add seventy-one thousand, four, fifty-four, sixty for our proposed budget.
Okay, I have a question. So if Marcia's gonna be in there, Marcia's gonna be doing thirty-two hours a week, that's gonna be in-house.
Uh, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter where they work from. They don't have to specifically be in the office, but they put in the hours.
She's told me that she'd like to have the same computer access so that she can actually. Answer questions anytime somebody asks them during.
And, and we can work out the technical details of that stuff. I don't have a problem with that. What we need, but this is funny. Because in almost every other budget where the salary or the amount was lumped into one. We broke them all down, so we could identify them because those people are all working specific hours at a specific rate. The Lister's office is a little different. Howard had a specific number of hours, Marcia's had pretty much a specific numbers. And Dean has been as needed, so you don't have the ability to say. Lister three or Lister two gets this money, cause it doesn't work. So. I like this proposal better because we know that Marcia's position will guarantee her thirty-two hours. At the twenty-five plus the six percent, whatever that comes out, twenty-six, twenty-seven bucks next, starting next July. And. It's, it's a flexible position where if she feels she wants or needs to work. Four hours or six hours a week more, it's there, depending, because if the other people can't work. Like if Howard doesn't wanna work twenty-eight hours or Dean isn't available, then, then. The ability there is to juggle that money and you're not shoehorning it just to one person. Uh, that is the way, and this is the only budget that is counter to all the rest of them, that it works better. Because there's not specific hours.
Money, that's right.
Right, it's a pool of money for that office to do their jobs and who gets the sixty hours. Or whatever that needs to be is kind of, oh, um, based on availability.
Well, it's also based on the scope of work because that's much, much different than any other department.
It, it, it's a kind of work that there could be a ton of it or, you know, at a certain time of year. They probably need to be there forty hours a week each. And then there's a time of year when you don't need to be quite that demanding and it's a much more flexible. Highway police, they're all, they're all different. They're. Pretty much nailed to the wall at forty hours, but, but I like that proposal, Mary. I like to.
See if the Lister has any comments about this discussion.
Now, if you don't remember where we started. Cause I am, but, but I like.
What we're doing is taking out the Lister consulting piece.
And just leaving it.
Next page. Leave the format, the, and, and group them, listers as a group.
Yep.
And then just adding the six percent on top of what this year's sixty-seven, four, ten was. So that we're budgeting for seventy-one thousand, four, fifty-four, sixty.
Yep.
I like it.
And, and.
Could actually knock off the sixty cents if you wanted.
I don't know. Likely required.
But.
What does that do to the total budget though? I haven't even figured out.
Oh, good God. Twenty-seven, four pages here, forty-four.
No, 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 I'm, I'm talking. No, 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 I'm, I'm talking about the totals.
It, it really doesn't.
Pretty close to Washington.
Yeah.
Which that hurts.
Pretty close to Washington. Cause the consulting amount that was proposed was twenty-seven thousand seven seventy-four. And the number one listener amount was forty thousand ninety-six. So you're talking just about sixty-seven. So it's actually a little more money. Cause that's kind of the amount we have now, and this, this reflects.
It's four, it's actually four hundred and. Four hundred and something bucks less to do it lumped together instead of separated.
So Billy, you catching this, uh, the listers? Listers will be aggregated again.
It's on video. You know, Billy, it's funny, because like I just said, we, we separated them all, but since budget, it works better the other way. Because there aren't specific hours. And, 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 and actually, that does give a lot of flexibility, so that they.
To the listeners, so they can work out who can come in and.
And, and work what needs to be worked and, and get it done.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's a good, good way to do that. Marcia, do you want to comment now that we beat this to death?
Yeah, I don't know. Um. I've, uh, I, you know, unmuted myself. I've been listening to you, but, um. You know, it's been, it, it's been a tough year. It's been a really tough year. Um. You know, um, I'm sad to see Howard go. He's been, um, my mentor. And, um, there's a lot of things that, um, he didn't share with me. And he chose not to share with me. So it's going to be a learning curve for me, for sure. But.
Yeah.
I have, uh, you know, I have, um. People that I can lean on, um, from Christie Wright to PVNR to. You know, what, uh, what other resources are out there for me? So. I'm not going to let the town down. I'm going to keep, keep us on the right track.
Yep. Marcia, do you see any problem with what we're proposing? Cause it's basically budgeting the six percent increase into the pot.
No, I don't see any problems at all, Mary. Not at all.
Nope. All right.
Nope.
And you know, sometimes Marcia. Sometimes Marcia. Sometimes Marcia, the best way to learn is when you have to, you know? When, when something hits your upside of the head, then you call in the people that can help you. Understand it. And once you understand it, you've learned it.
Oh, absolutely. These past two weeks, I have. I have been online with, uh, PVNR and with, uh, Nimerick. Going over multiple, multiple, uh, webinars and, uh, trying to learn what. I didn't know or what I was not shown to know. So I'm confident that, uh, I will not let the town down. And, uh, things will go smoothly.
Yep.
I promise.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. So I think we've solved the listing.
I think we got that one. Is there any other major glitches in general?
I think we beat it to death. We've gone through it like six times.
Buried it.
Most of it we have gone through. Is there any?
So if you start with page one, all of this income stuff is pretty much stuff that we. Kind of out of our hands.
Yeah.
And, and that's good. Um, we've, we've changed around some of the, um, things, you know? And, and I'm not, um, knocking us, but I guess we're close. So. I always say, you know, well, I, the select board, you know, we, we take the six percent, um, increase in the total amount for the board. And I always look at it and there have been years when we didn't even come close to spending it. We're getting a little tighter. Um, but I, I know a couple of years I asked the board not to take the increase, because we didn't spend it the year before, but. Um, it, that's, I don't think is a big deal with this.
No, I mean, we, we had budgeted for. What, twenty-five thousand in the fiscal year that just closed and we used twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, so it's pretty close.
We're fine.
But there were years when we budgeted, then there was a ten thousand discrepancy, you know, but, but I think we're much better still there.
Well, I worry more about, I worry more about our legal. Because, you know, we're facing the same situation across the street.
What line is that, Don, that we should be looking at?
Well, I, I, I just thought, Don, maybe we could go through this page by page like we did the others. Um, so we've kind of gone through page one. We've, we've taken out the, um, Lister one thing and we've got rid of that. So the select board and the social security and all that's the expenses. Um.
Um, just a.
I had a question as I looked through this, the town hall maintenance and, and we've gone back to. We know we budgeted twenty-five this year.
Where are you, Joe?
Uh, it's page two, I think, thirty-five, two oh five. Is that three?
Yeah, it's page three.
Okay, well, excuse me.
Forty.
Okay.
But anyway, we, we put in forty. Is, is there a, um, just something that we're thinking of? Or are we thinking about getting back onto the downstairs thing again now that the, uh, police built the public safety building?
Yes.
Well, kind of.
Okay.
Kind of.
Okay, I know, I'm, because I want, I want to move forward with that.
You're a construction, so I mean.
Right, but, but we didn't want to try to do a, um, uh, do remodeling assessment or. Like, you know, for here, at the same time, we were trying to do the other building. That's why we stopped. We didn't, we didn't do it for this.
I think this is like looking ahead and kind of be, being prepared for grants that might be out there.
So, so I'm okay with that, because right now, I mean, Bert and I are on that committee, kind of in.
Okay.
Um, so that was what I found. Okay, that was the only question I had when I looked through these.
All right.
The rest of it, I was happy with. The, uh, now that we've got the other thing, I was happy with the other.
Attorneys, attorneys general, oh, three, five, two, one, one, which is pretty close. Pretty close to where you were before there on town hall maintenance.
Okay, yep.
It, we budgeted thirty. Um. I, I would say we're, without, I didn't check with Carrie on it, but, uh, I would say we're pretty close to that right now. We got. Some time left, so we're going to be over on. I mean.
And I think some of this.
Definitely over twenty. I mean, we're, we're way over.
You know, we're, well, this whole south end of town thing has really hammered the daylights out of it.
Well, and not only that, but we haven't received, we haven't received the bill yet for the, for the status conference stuff. That I, I forwarded that to you guys. I mean, that was pretty extensive. I mean, that's good legal work, but still.
It's, we're not. Latest invoice today.
Pardon me?
We just got his latest invoice today.
Wha- what was that, Bill? How much?
Like fifty-two?
Fifty-two hundred?
Yeah. So you see.
It, it adds up quick.
And, and not only that, but, uh, uh, we're, we're facing the same thing across the street.
And, you know, and unfortunately, that's going to start. In this budget we're in.
Yeah.
That we've only proposed twenty-four.
That's correct. Which is why we're going to be over even more.
Yeah, that, that, probably that line will be deficit spent.
I mean, I gotta explain that to the people, I will, but.
But, but that's an easier explanation, because we budget for a normal operating year. And we had this situation on the south end of town thrust on us. And so even though we have deficit spent this item, we have negotiated. An amount of money to offset that, to allow our police officers to protect our citizens. You like that?
I like the way you said that. I do.
You know, because there is.
But I'm, I'm just seriously thinking that we should, we should.
You want to bump it up another ten and just be careful?
I think we should. I, I really, I mean, I don't know whether ten is the appropriate number, but I don't think thirty is going to be adequate. I really don't.
I'd like it to be ten period and not need it. That doesn't happen anymore.
What are we doing? What's professional services, the line right above it? Is that, is that a line that?
That's what we typically use for like, if we use an engineering service for something that's not related to a project.
Specialty.
Yeah, like Autocreek Engineering does something for us that's just.
Okay.
Off, you know, we can't relate to a project, that's kind of where it goes, just a.
Okay.
Right, that, yeah. But I mean, if you, I mean, that's forty for that. It, it is what it is.
So are you, are we saying forty thousand for attorney fees?
Yeah.
You're kind of happy.
Okay.
Got to, I mean.
There we go.
Got to have enough money to pay them.
And we're going to be lucky if we come to.
Just make a note that the attorney was not the one, but I, I agree. I think we should.
Right, I mean, we don't know. How this litigation on the south, what, what we're going to get into down there. But like I say, part of that's going to be, well. I'm hoping it's resolved, because if they're going to move the people from one side of the road to the other, we're going to want the same benefits we got from. The west side on the east side. And, and, and the precedent's been set. So it's going to be really hard for anybody, because they're going to go through the same thing as we proposed for Cortina. It's a change of use.
Yeah.
And this whole thing, so we can just go to their attorney says, if you want to cut a lot of expenses out, this is what we're at, and this is what we got. And this is what we'll.
Already had that discussion with our attorney, and I can tell, I was.
Let's not get into what we discussed.
Yeah.
Say that what?
Don't get into what we discussed with our attorney.
Yeah, okay. The, uh, let me say this, uh, having. As an evaluative kind of a thing, because we're into this particular, uh, line item of attorneys. So, um, you never know. Uh, what you're going to get until you get here, sitting in the seat that I'm sitting in, because I. And to have more of the conversations with our attorney, and I can tell you this, we are very, very fortunate. We're very lucky. We have a very, very competent attorney and, uh, and a firm. These are all done. And, uh. We should be very, very happy with the work that he does for us. So.
Hey.
And it isn't, it isn't always easy to get attorneys that are good at governmental stuff, you know?
It's a limited pool. I know some of them.
Yeah.
And we've had retirements out of that pool, so. Okay.
Anyways, they're, yeah.
So we good with this page?
I was, I think so. I don't see anything else that jumps out at me. Oh, just a note to self or a note to Bill. Because we've added on, under the salary line, the thousand dollar bump ups. This. We might have to just recalculate social security and whatever, so Kerry might.
The, the associated things.
Yes.
Um, does anybody have a copy that is relatively easy to read? That would reflect what we made, changes we made.
Oh, God.
Well, I've tried to put them all down. I don't know if I can remember the discussion. Mary takes.
Um, where, what, what number, Mary, was the Lister? The old number for the listeners?
Well, it's oh, three, five, one, one, five.
Yeah.
So if it's a blank line, that was a, that would have been a new category.
Right.
For Kerry and Susan to assign. So if you're not, if you're not going to use them, that's fine. They're just not going to be there.
Right. So we're, we're on one, one, five.
Yeah.
That's where we add the. We just.
Seventy-one, four fifty-four.
Yep.
And that'll be just, say, listers, right?
Yep.
Find it back where we were.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and that amount is the seventy-one thousand, I believe.
Seventy-one, four fifty-four.
Yep.
Well, that's on the first page.
Sixty. Kurt wants the sixty. We're going to knock it off.
Down at the bottom, uh, Lister one, two, three.
Okay.
So instead of one, two, three, it's just going to be listers and then we'll be under that number and it's.
So there's, there's some changes, Bill, that we did make to this budget that would reflect that, um, in, in the highway.
Well, somewhere.
Budget, okay.
Let's stay on this one, or we're really.
Seventy-one, four fifty.
We can, we can talk.
Seventy-one.
Okay. It's recorded, but it's still maybe god blessed confusing. Okay.
All right, so. And the stormwater number was from Andres.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. General insurance that's set by league, the league.
Yep.
Okay.
Health insurance is what it is.
Yep.
Can't change, like, I mean.
Thank interest sucks, but it might be a little, well, no. We're not paying any, because we have the money set aside. Um, League of Cities and Towns confirmed our dues.
This is the name of this air. Computer services, Fourth of July fireworks.
Oh, I never tallied up how much the whole townwide celebration thing was. But.
That amount for the fireworks is less than we budgeted for this year. Is there a reason?
Yeah. Cause we're combining.
No, we've got a.
We've got a private contractor.
We got a contractor that can do it for that.
Oh, boy.
And put on as good a show.
Oh, bless.
Yeah, yeah.
I can remember when the fire department. And we set horse trailers on fire.
Proposal, we, the last quote we got from Northside was fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So.
Cause the gunpowder is going up.
Um, so do we leave townwide celebration at twenty-five hundred? I, I didn't tally them, folks, so I can't tell you. We've got. We'll be fine. Uh.
You know, that's amazing, Mary.
What?
Because, because you are so up to date on all this other stuff, and now we get to townwide celebration, which was yours.
Did you tally it up?
No, no, but I would figure if anybody knew what it was and wanted more.
Don, I guess I was occupied with other stuff. So if you.
Do you think you needed more?
I am not sure at all, but I think we had fair numbers that came in. I mean, we got good deals around and.
It was a good time to have.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We had a bunch of volunteers.
Would rather been there than here.
I thought it was well done.
The week.
Yeah.
It was a fun time.
The county tax, I don't think they've said it yet, have they?
No, I see we have seventy-five hundred in there estimated.
Yeah. And given two years ago, it was sixty thousand, I doubt it will go up. Unless they decide they're going to do something about the dispatch center, but.
And then we're going to scream and holler and carry on. Because they don't have a plan. We beat that one to death too.
Well, that's the only fair way to do it.
Well, it is, right.
Oh, did we do the contract for generator maintenance? Did we see that?
We do that in, um, July.
Okay.
And that should be enough to cover it. Okay, because they do all of them now, where.
Covers the maintenance and, and, and inevitable repairs.
Yep.
Property maps went up a lot because.
Uh, so we, we, that was from the proposal from the company that does it, that would include them putting our Lister cards online.
Oh, right, right. Okay. All right.
And I had three people this afternoon after Marshall left to come in and say, can I get, can I get a Lister card?
Yep.
So that's in the budget here?
Yes.
Now, what about, wh- what about the, um, what about the mapping? Is that in here?
That, that is the mapping.
That is the mapping. Now, what about the town clerks?
That's a whole different thing. That's, she's. Uh, the last I knew, she was trying to get a third quote. She has two so far. But that would probably be appropriate for a individual expense rather than a budget.
Right.
A what?
A individually authorized expense rather than a budget item, rather than putting it on the budget.
It's the one time.
Time.
The, the, the.
So.
Property map is going to be, it's going to be recurring, not at ninety-one hundred, but it's going to drop a little bit, but that's going to be a recurring.
Yeah.
The, the property, the land records are not going to be recurring.
We could take that out of capital, maybe, but.
That's what she was talking about.
Yeah, possibly, possibly some grant money might be coming.
Or, or, m- maybe. This Thursday, we'll find out that we can use some of this ARPO and apply for that.
Our, the ARPO money was originally one of the specific.
That's right.
Included items for it.
We had a select board member who didn't want to. Could have had it all stapled.
Who will remain nameless at this point.
Okay.
So.
Um, I'm not going to attempt to tally up what we did. So my suggestion on the general budget is to have Bill compile everything. And bring it in for our next select board meeting and then see if we can vote on it. Or maybe we get it ahead of time and make sure we've covered everything, but. I think that's everything that.
That's what I mean.
That's everything except we should, at this point. Except, set the date for the pre-town meeting.
Okay.
And last year, it was January eleven.
Oh, that's.
And yeah, and last year, wasn't it a bit early?
It was.
Do we have to?
No.
Pre-town.
Had to be at.
I don't know.
Three different ones. Wasn't that it? And.
We, we didn't do it there last year.
We did it here.
Right. Right, no, but it was something about.
Well, it was the availability of the school board, so that we had to be there because normally that meeting is somewhere around the twenty fifth.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty fifth.
So we need to talk with the school about what. What they have for suggested dates. We can't set it for the school. We do have a liaison.
That's the way she feels.
The uh, come to me and he doesn't come to her. He goes to you and whines and cries.
He doesn't just go to me. I'm not the only one.
He didn't go to me.
So maybe for our meeting.
I'm washed.
We can put set dates. For pre-town meeting.
Thinks he's going to get a sympathetic ear, that's what.
Okay. And in the meantime, maybe our liaison to the school can check with Lynette and figure out what dates they think would work for them. For the pre-town meeting. Is that, they were the restriction last time, as I remember.
Well, they're going first this time too.
I don't know, whatever.
Yeah, it's their turn to go first, so we got to.
Wait. So those dates that we um, need to get from Carrie, one of them is like the final date for many um. Valid items.